Okay, great. I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of August 24th, 2020. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up and speak and download the Zoom app if you need to. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand. I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record. And the public and staff, if I miss someone's hand up, if something's being displayed, just please let me know. With that, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Farrar here. Councilmember Wagner. Councilmember Wagner, I see you there. Okay. Mayor Proton Peak.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
Eva Cormuth, Councilmember Mullin Abson.
Okay, thank you very much. And before we get to approval of the agenda, I want to ask if council would consider moving 6A up. We have a fair amount of interest in this item and a couple of kids that want to speak. So I want to bring that up, and before maybe I'll see if there's a motion on that. I want to ask Riva, I guess. What do we make staff hang out and wait if we move the consent items to the very rear?
Yes.
What happens there? We do?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we no matter what, we should hear consent first so we can let some people go home?
I would recommend that you hear the consent calendar. It's pretty short tonight, but that's up to the desires of the council.
All right, just trying to figure out any way to streamline and move things along as best I can. Any second or thoughts on moving 6A up?
A second moving 6A up.
Okay.
Can we move it after consent?
After consent. Okay, can we have a roll call on that motion, please?
Mayor Pearson.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So the motion on the floor is to approve the agenda moving 6A up to after the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Peak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 13th, 2020.
Okay, great. Now we have written and oral communications from the public. Do we have any speakers signed up?
We have 10 speakers. Wendy Dunn, Bruce Silverstein, Lori Cantor, Norman Haney, Kate McGinnley, Judith Israel, Lynn Norton, Hamish Patterson, Andy Lyon, and John Maza. So first we'll hear from Wendy Dunn.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, are you there?
She may not actually be in the meeting yet. So we can move on to Bruce Silverstein, and we'll come back to see if Wendy's there at the end.
Okay, Bruce, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So I have two things to speak about. I'll try to be quick as I can. The first is, at the end of the last city council meeting, there were two votes on two, quote, "urgency ordinances," close quote. One was for a mask ordinance, the other was for a signage alteration of the rule. Two weeks have passed. No proposal that I'm aware of has been made, no proposed ordinance. I commented last week that, two weeks ago, that the proper process is not to have urgency ordinances, but to have ordinary ordinances where people get to comment in the ordinary course. Urgency ordinances can be brought up at any time very quickly and voted on literally the day that they're proposed. Either the two matters were urgent, in which case we should have the ordinances, or they're not truly urgent, in which case we should have proper process. I don't know which it is. I suspect they actually are urgent. They've been urgent for many months. I don't understand why they haven't been addressed yet, but to my knowledge, they haven't yet been addressed. The other issue is the city council election. There is a candidate who has been determined by the city and the county to not be qualified to to stand for election or to be on the ballot as a result of allegedly not having adequate number of signatures on the nominating paper. I've written to the city council about this. A number of others have written as well. I believe there's an injustice occurring here. As I understand it, looking at the nomination paper and applying the law appropriately, as I believe it should be, the candidate had at least 20 or 21 signatures, 20 is the requirement. And I believe that something needs to be done about this, and I understand it may or may not be within the province of city council to affirmatively act on this to fix it, but at a minimum, city council can write to the county or can ask the clerk, if the clerk has the jurisdiction to fix this, to do so. The city council later tonight has two letters on its agenda that are asking for relief from other agencies that the city council has no authority over. In the past, the city council has done that on a regular basis, and I think it's important that we have a full and fair election. Every vote should count. Every nomination to vote should count. Every citizen, every resident of Malibu who wishes to stand for election, who properly complies with the requirements, should be entitled to stand for election. And I believe that there is a candidate here who's been wrongfully excluded. I'm not suggesting that the wrongfulness has been intentional in any way, shape, or form, but it is wrong, and I believe it should be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Next, we'll hear from Lori Cantor.
Lori, okay.
I think I saw her, yeah, in the meeting.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, does that volume sound about right, or?
Perfect.
Okay, great. I'm Lori Cantor. I live on Doom Drive, and I'm here to ask the city council, what happened to the installation of speed humps on Doom Drive and Fern Hill? If there are no answers tonight, there'll be more and more citizens asking you this same question until they are installed, because this is about failure of the city to protect public safety, its number one duty. Doom Drive and Fern Hill and other Point Doom residents are sick and tired of having their requests for speed humps on these two streets be ignored for decades as they risk being hit just taking a walk or riding a bike due to speeding. Proper process to support installation has been observed. At four notice, Public Safety Commission meetings, data collected over six months showed constant speeding of over 50 miles an hour and regularly speeding of up to 70. The commission unanimously found the constant speeding an unacceptable risk to public safety and voted 5-0 for installation of speed humps. On July 13th, you voted 5-0 to install speed humps and confirm sufficient funds in this year's budget for the work. The city manager was instructed to proceed. Rob Duboe, Director of Public Works, added the project to the annual city contract. Residents received notice in their mailboxes. Work would start in August. Then suddenly silence, followed in two weeks by Ms. Feldman's notice the work is on hold due to, quote, "scheduling issues with the city's annual street overlay project." Staff will work with the Point Doom community when the project is ready to move forward. Sounds like vague BS to me and Point Doom residents. The project's ready to move forward. Why hasn't it proceeded? Has the other annual street maintenance work proceeded? If the work has been rescheduled, when's the new beginning date? If it hasn't been rescheduled, why not? This is a serious matter to your constituents. I sent you a next door thread showing the vast majority of residents want speed humps and believe it's the only solution. And as Mr. Duboe explained, permission from residents is unnecessary when data shows clear safety issue like this and speed humps are necessary. Maybe more important to you is the looming liability you face now. The hard data shows excessive speeding on these roads, and you're all on record, unanimously admitting by your vote and comments that you know these roads are dangerous and speed humps are necessary. I have an email from the mayor saying exactly this. At this point, if someone is gravely injured or killed, the city will be in an indefensible position as to liability. Time's up for inaction, because a few residents with influence with the city have killed this project for decades. I hope you will do the right thing and quickly let residents know when they can expect the humps to be installed based on your unanimous vote to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Next, we'll hear from Norm Haney.
You there, Norm?
I did that. Hello?
I can hear you, Norm.
All right, fine. So, good evening, city council members. I'm very excited about discussing my hotel project with you once again. Two weeks ago, city council discussed two issues associated with the hotel. One, of course, was the amount of benefits the city would like to receive if the project is ultimately approved. And the other was the desire on the part of virtually every city council member to have the project come back in front of this city council before the end of your terms. And that was supported by everyone. And so I'm hoping that we can establish the schedule with the planning commission, the second week in September or the first week in October, so that the project can come back with their recommendation before the end of your term. That is what everybody said they were in support of. And, you know, the quicker this project is either approved or modified or denied, the better off. If it's approved, it's going to provide $90,000 a month to the city. Because if it's approved a month earlier, then it's going to be finished a month earlier. And then the TOT starts running at that point. It's a good project. There are virtually no negative impacts and a whole bunch of positive impacts for the city. So those are my comments, and I hope there can be some discussion about it, and the planning commission can find a way to get it on the agenda so that it can come back in front of you with the benefit structure that you recommended, and we can move forward with it. Thank you very much for listening, and I'll be looking forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Okay, Kate McGinnley is going to wait for 6A, so we'll move on to Judith Israel. There, Judith?
Hi, I'm here.
We can hear you. Yeah, we can.
Okay. Okay, good evening, city council members. On August 3rd, the State Parks Lagoon, filled with 800 gallons of water and algae blooms, was breached into the third Point Malibu Surf Rider Beach Swimming and Surfing Beach. Since then, no swimming hazardous contamination warning signs are posted. And the LA County of Public Health online has red markers for the lagoon Surf Rider Beach. Also, there is a foul stench as you walk along the beach. Even so, there have been thousands, upon hundreds of daily beachgoers swimming in the contaminated lagoon breach, beach, breach, breach, and the ocean, escaping the heat and months of pandemic quarantine isolation, and who are now risking bacterial infection in their health. I have contacted State Parks, who manages the lagoon, and asked them to possibly shore up the breach, but they said it isn't their responsibility. And I would like to know whose responsibility it is to protect the public's health. I have never seen a breach in the summer and Surf Rider Beaches closed. Additionally, maybe it's time for us to finally decide whether to keep the lagoon breached all the time or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.
Next, we'll hear from Lynn Norton.
Yes, I can hear you, Lynn.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to talk about short-term rentals for a minute. At the last city council meeting, I understood that there was going to be an effort prior to the September meeting to get some advance idea from Coastal if they generally like the concept of what we were talking about doing with the short-term rentals, and if we could do anything to expedite the process. And I feel like I just wanted to, you know, put that out there that it's really important for that to happen before September, because it will affect the way that we think, you know, and how we feel are the right decisions to make in September if we have an idea of where we stand with Coastal, you know, because like if Coastal said, forget it, we want the whole status quo, well, we'd be thinking completely differently. So I know they're not going to do that, but it is very valuable for us to know as much as we can about where Coastal stands. And I also think that it would be good for the city council to be in on conversations with Coastal, because you are the people who passionately have expressed, you know, that you feel the importance of this. And I think that, like, staff is extremely competent, and I know that Bonnie can discuss all of the nitty-gritty details, you know, with Coastal, but when it comes to, like, negotiating with them, it should be, I would hope that you would be involved. I know, I just, I have the sense that, that, you know, Riva has expressed things that make me feel like she would really like to hold on to the TOT tax that we're getting from that. And I don't mean that as an insult to Riva, but it's just like if you want to negotiate something, you want people who feel strongly about it to be the ones negotiating it. So I would hope that maybe Mikey, as the mayor, and another council member could be involved in that. You know, amongst you, people who really want to see this happen. And then just, I'll just throw in that I do think Norm deserves to have his thing on the schedule, because, you know, he doesn't, you know, he can't start all over again explaining to a new city council what his project is all about. And so I just wanted to throw that in since I heard Norm talking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Next, we'll hear from Hamish Patterson.
Unmuted. Hello? Hello?
I can hear you, Hamish.
Okay. Yeah, I want to second what Lynn just said, and let's get Norm on the schedule. He's got a good project that deserves to be heard as soon as possible. I want to do what I've been doing here since I began. I'm going to give you guys another warning that apathy and being silent is just leading us to a dangerous place. I just got back from Portland, Oregon, where I went for myself to investigate the riots and what is going on. The city center of Portland, Oregon is destroyed. Businesses are gone forever. It's not isolated. It's the entire city center. It looks like something out of some Third World apocalypse. The group that is inflicting terrorism on the community of Portland, Oregon, claims to be Black Lives Matter. They are not. I infiltrated them. I have video all over my YouTube channel for yourself. These are terrorists, and they're bent on destroying things. What I really want you guys to understand is, is people have lost faith with our civic institutions. And they're telling you all over the place. It's going on all over America tonight while Malibu sits in its little comfy bubble and doesn't even explore the city we live in. Los Angeles is being boarded up. The morale of our city is crushed. Children are being terrorized and not allowed to go to school. All the while, you guys sit back and don't say anything. Don't investigate any of this. Don't do your due diligence as just basic human beings with institutional power to go see what is going on. Our economy is being destroyed. There's no money coming. There's no money coming. So when you see what's going on, why are gun sales for first-time buyers going through the roof? Because people have lost faith with government institutions. And to sit and think that Malibu can sit on the sidelines and think everything's okay because everybody has money in the bank is to deny the city of 10 million people that I'll keep telling you about that has lost faith in this institution and their way of getting back, their way of feeding their families, their way of educating their children. So look, it's super simple. You swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution. That is your guiding light as city council members. You have been given the paperwork to follow, i.e. the Constitution of California and the Constitution of the United States. You have abdicated your authority, and you've turned your back on our Constitution and your oath. And I say, all of you are in breach of your oath, and all of you should resign, because you're not protecting your community one bit with your silence and your apathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Andy Lyon.
Always good to follow, Hamish. Hey, thank you, Hamish. Andy here. Good evening. Couple things touching on Norm's thing. I wasn't going to say anything, but then I heard him, and it reminded me about last meeting's shakedown of $1 million. I think the number of million was thrown out as a fast track to get this thing going for him, but with no real place to go. And I just think that that $1 million should go to taking those encumbrances off the city-owned, supposedly city-owned properties, like the Triangle property right there at Webway and PCH that is basically bought with county bond money, and there's going to be a parking ride. A lot of people don't realize that's what's going to be happening on that lot. And I think that that money should go towards buying out that bond and bringing that back to what we want to do with it. I know it's all tied up in the city budget that we don't have money to pay for a, you know, handpicked consultant to tell us what we want to do with our lots. But, you know, turning it into a parking ride is not the right thing, and that would be a great benefit to the city. And I know Norm would probably love to see his name someplace in on that, and I'd love to have it go that way. You guys vote to go before the next council. I hope to be on the next council that, you know, put something cool there. The other thing I wanted to talk again about was that letter that Mikey, you sent out, not to be partisan or anything. My point was to be that you unilaterally sent that out as mayor of Malibu after you, you know, voted against us looking at going towards a stronger mayor, that a stronger mayor could send that a letter by herself. And when I asked for clarification, it's who wrote the letter? And I asked you both, you and Riva, a couple of times to answer in your comments, who wrote the letter? Where did it generate? And whatever? I know it comes, you know, basically from the League of Cities, which, you know, everybody wants to get in that League of Cities, it seems like, and everybody wants to have a little comeuppance there. But when Riva, she sort of softballed it back to you and said, do you want me to listen? Do you want me to respond to the letter? You told her, no, she didn't need to answer to me. Which is like, I asked Riva. I didn't ask you to ask Riva. I asked Riva to answer about that. So I don't get why you decided that it was unimportant for her to answer, and then you went off on your whole spiel of a, you know, that it wasn't a partisan thing, but then attacked. I don't, that wasn't what it was about. It was about procedure and policy and how this goes, you know? And it's funny that tonight, you've got another thing, a letter, but you're asking the council to give you to give you the authority to send out letters. So like, what is it? What's the urgency on that? Was it super urgent the other time and not tonight? But I don't know. That's just, to me, the fact that you told Riva not to answer to me as a citizen asking a question of a city manager that we pay for, and then she should be answering to us, is like...
Andy?
Yeah.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from John Maza.
Johnny, you there?
Hello, yes, I was trying to unmute. First, I want to thank Hamish, because I think he hit it right on the head. He's talking nationally and in general, but what's really happening in my little neighborhood, Point Doom, is people are really frustrated. Yesterday, we had an invasion, home invasion robbery with five police cars and hauling a guy off when the people were actually in the house. We, and that's five houses from me. We have, people have discovered, because of the traffic, that they can race up Birdview and race across Fern Hill and get out of Zimera's. And we have the motorcycles figuring that out. We have racing on Canaan almost every night. I hear it. We have people parking on sidewalks. We have people parking in people's front yards. And we don't see a huge amount of reaction to that. So what I'm really here tonight, and I want to thank Lori Cantor for commenting, is we've had a project to try to make Doom Drive and Fern Hill safe at the request of the school district. Planning commission asked them to make sure when they opened that school that it was going to be safe. And so four meetings of the Safety Commission and one meeting of you reams of data, we decided to do it. And now the people all over next door are going, where is it? What's happening? The word is, we'll get back to you after, basically, nine months. Isn't cutting it as far as confidence goes in something happening. It's not six and a half years waiting for a redneckside or five years waiting for dark skies or things like that. This is a project that's paid for. It's ready to go in. The crews are ready. And all of a sudden, it's not happening. And it's little kids we're talking about. I mean, somebody on the council is going to, maybe this goes on for much longer. They're going to reopen that school. Somebody's going to have to call a parent and tell them, gee, it was my fault your kid got hit. Or somebody else. So all we need to know is when? Just when? Is it going to be next month? Or is it going to be next year? If it's next year, it's a big problem, just like Portland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
It looks like Wendy Dunn has not joined the meeting, so that concludes this item.
I count nine speakers. I think you said there was 10, or am I wrong?
Yes, but Kate McGinnley decided she wanted a wait.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Thank you, speakers. And now we'll go to Commission Committee City Manager updates.
Evening, mayor. I'm assuming we don't have any commission updates, so I will go ahead. Nice to see all of you this evening. I want to start by giving an update on COVID-19. In Los Angeles County right now, there's a total of over 232,000 cases. Today, there were just under 1,200 new cases reported in the county. In Malibu, we have 91 confirmed cases and sadly, three deaths in our community. There haven't been any additional revisions to the Los Angeles County Public Health Order since it was last revised on August 12th. But we do monitor that information closely, and we'll share any information if that changes. One thing I was informed by LA County was that one of the key indicators is the positivity rate. And about a month ago, the positivity rate in the county was 400 cases per 100,000 people, and that has been declining steadily, where we're just about 220 cases per 100,000 people. So definitely good news with that. And of course, everybody is still required to wear face coverings and maintain physical distancing when in public. An update on our fire rebuilds. We've approved 246 single-family homes through planning, issued 137 building permits, and there are seven dwellings that have been completed. As you all know, we are basically in fire season now, and so we urge everybody to please make sure that they are prepared for fire season, that, you know, these things can happen quickly as we see what's happening in Northern California. That gives us a lot of alarm to make sure that we are ready here in Southern California. And we, as the council had directed us after the Woolsey fire, have proceeded with developing not only an evacuation plan, but we've also come up with evacuation zones that the community will, over time, become familiar with. And just very briefly, the zones will start with number 11. For those of you familiar with it, Topanga... For those of you familiar with the Topanga area, their zones go from one through 10. And since we're served by the same fire department, the fire department asked us to start ours at 11. So we will have four zones, 11, 12, 13, and 14. So please stay tuned for more information on that. And if you're interested, you can certainly visit the city's website at malibu city.org/fire safety to view all of that. There's also a small business grant program. That program application system opened today. And that would be grants of up to $10,000 for small businesses. And you apply and then it's, you're awarded on a lottery system. And again, there's more information on the city's website about that. In regards to the very, very high numbers of visitors that we have seen through the beaches, particularly over the hot spell, I did request additional staffing from Los Angeles Sheriff's Station for this weekend, next weekend, and the Labor Day weekend. The additional deputies will be paid for by Supervisor Sheila Kuehl's office. And our own Public Works crews are now doing trash pickup on both weekend days, this past weekend and then through Labor Day, trying to just stay ahead of, of the amount of trash that is coming into our city. And I am aware of the concerns on Point Doom during the weekends. And again, asked for extra enforcement there, particularly around the Point Doom Nature Preserve. We did have a community service officer there as well, ticketing cars. And we're working on increasing the amount of vehicles that are towed. And that's something I'm in close contact with the Sheriff's Station on. Our temporary skate park will be reopening up on Monday, August 31st. It will be by reservation only. The reservation system works seven days in ahead. So if you're looking at the reservation system right now, you'll only see one day for next week. But by tomorrow and each following day, a day will open up. And the hours will be Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. As the time changes, that 7:00 p.m. close will probably get earlier to coincide with sunset. And we're also moving forward with the permanent skate park design. And we'll be having some virtual public meetings and more information on the dates and time that that can be found on the city website. The first one will be on Wednesday, September 2nd. The Civic Center Way Improvement Project, the contractor is mobilizing this week. So we're expecting that project to start soon. And while it's extremely unfortunate that the kids are not in school at OLM and Webster, we'll be taking advantage of the decreased traffic there as we do that. And let's see, we have a couple of things upcoming on August 1st. At 6 o'clock, Red Cross will be doing a virtual briefing about sheltering during COVID. And there will be a link to that briefing posted on the city's website. And on August 26th, Metro Next Gen will be holding a public hearing at 6 o'clock. You can get information on that by visiting metro.net or the city's website. And the purpose of this public meeting is to discuss Route 534, which is the Metro Bus Route through Malibu. What they're looking at doing is modifying the schedule and route and changing that number to the 134 and discontinuing service through Point Doom. Which leads me into the question about the speed humps and that project. When the council approved that, we thought we would be able to absorb the work into our annual street overlay project. The city goes out to bid for the overlay project every year. We did not include the speed hubs in that bidding process. And we thought that we would be able to wrap it into the contingency that we had built into that and the timing of that with the contractor. And unfortunately, that is not happening. So we will have to go out separately to bid for that. It is still on our Public Works project list and we intend to move forward with that within this fiscal year. And there is funding in the budget for that. So I apologize to the community for the delay in that, but, but that was the reason why. A couple other upcoming, September 9th, the Planning Commission will discuss the Tranquus Bridge repair. And September 9th, there will be a school district scoping meeting for the middle and high school master plan project. And there's more information on the city's website. That concludes my report unless the council would like me to answer any questions either from the council or from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a question on the speed hump. So what, what is the process to get the bid in on that?
So we just need to prepare all of the bid documents, which is just time consuming. But it's on our list of things to do and we're moving forward with it as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. City councilors, Karen, do you have comments?
Thank you. I wanted to just start by saying that today was the first day of school for SMMUSD. And I just wish everybody luck, particularly as remote learning is still taking place. But I know the district's been really working hard on that. I just want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into that to make it a better experience for students and staff members. Please, everyone, if you haven't done the census, take 10 minutes at most and fill it out. Malibu is far below the response rate of surrounding areas. The last day to do it is September 30th. So you've got about another month. And the website is very easy to find, my2020census.gov. Regarding what's been keeping me busy since the last meeting, I attended a seminar put on by the Institute for Local Government, Rethinking Natural Disasters After COVID-19, Building Local Resilience to Earthquakes, Mudslides, and Wildfires. Extremely informative and I'm really happy that the ILG is, is doing that kind of work. I attended a virtual meeting with Senator Henry Stern, along with some of his staff members, and Mayor Pearson and City Manager Reva Feldman on several issues that affect all of us, including housing, environmental issues, disaster preparedness, power backup, and insurance reform. I've been involved in ongoing conversations with the Chair and Co-Chair of the Public Safety Commission. That's Chris Frost and Doug Stewart, along with the Mayor and City Manager and Lost Hills about parking enforcement, ticketing, and towing. We have hugely impacted beach access areas. Broad Beach seems to be the hardest hit since COVID started or, or the one seeing the biggest change, along with Point Doom. And we are trying to address these issues. I'd like to see more done and those discussions are continuing. And we're looking for input from Lost Hills on that. So that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jefferson, do you have some comments tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Mikey. Yes, quickly thanking Reva for dealing with the speed humps. I did get emails and phone calls about the timeline on that. I think that's been resolved for right now. Thank you. The other item that we heard from four speakers on was the Haney Hotel. From Norm himself, Lynn, Hamish, and Andy, all about timing on that. My question would be to Norm's statement, a hearing on the second week in September or the first week of October to get this project green lighted and moving. I look forward to the revenue for the city. Of course, I won't be here, but we do need that revenue. And the longer we delay, the longer we will not see that revenue chain. So my question to the council and to you, Mikey, is, and to Reva, when we can put this forward and get a time and a date so we can plan on this during our terms, or at least my terms, Skylar's term and Rick's term? Thank you, Mikey.
Councilmember Wagner, if I could just answer that briefly. The planning staff will be back in touch with Mr. Haney tomorrow. The part of what they've been reviewing is the amount of environmental review that needs to be done for that project. And obviously, there are timelines involved with that that can't be waived. So they will be back in touch with him to let him know the timing for the Planning Commission meeting. And it's certainly, as soon as it does go to planning, we'll bring it forward to council. And I, I understand the urgency, but we've got to follow all the steps and cross our Ts and dot our Is on that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Skylar, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just was going to ask, you know, there's been a handful of emails from people about the election related stuff. And I, maybe Christie is available and can sort of address some of the concerns that Bruce had brought up. And I know we've all received some emails about that. And a couple of people in the public have approached me. Just to kind of clarify, I know it has a lot more to do with the county than it does with us because they're kind of in charge of the electorate.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for some reason, my video is not working. I may leave the meeting and come back in the classic software engineering, turn it off and turn it on situation. But in answer to that question, actually, when we first started receiving information and questions about the county recorder's conclusion, Heather and I, the city clerk conferred, and Heather actually did contact the supervisor of the person who had done the review of the nomination paper to see if there was a, a second review. And the result of that conversation was essentially that the county had, was confident in its conclusion. And we obviously, you know, did that first. And I, I did contact the nominee to let her know, would be nominee to let her know that the procedure to challenge the conclusion is through the Superior Court. And, you know, it, I know this is going to make perfect sense to you because when you think about it outside of any particular situation, you, you wouldn't really want this body making any decisions about who should or should not run to challenge, you know, Rick in this case or any incumbent. So the way that it's done is there's just a set of rules set out in the Elections Code. The Elections Official is charged with implementing those rules. And then the Superior Court is there to, to provide review to make sure that they're implemented properly. So that's kind of where we are in that.
Thank you, Christie. And then if Reva could give us an update on what the status is of Norm's project and when we're going to be seeing something about that.
So Councilmember Peak, just similar what I just said to Mr. Wagner, when he asked the same questions, we're working through the Planning Department on what environmental review will or will not need to be taken for the project. And planning will be back in touch with Mr. Haney tomorrow to discuss the schedule, when it can get to the Planning Commission. And then we'll move it forward to the city council shortly thereafter.
All right, thank you. And then has, I don't know, the stuff that Judith mentioned about Surf Rider and the breach of a third point and whatnot. I actually haven't been, I know I've witnessed that from driving by, but I haven't been there and witnessed the smell or the signage, I believe, that's put up. I believe it's similar signage to, as what's been put up anytime the creek is, is breached there. But has anybody from the Health Department or the state contacted the city about anything alarming related to that?
I'm not aware of any issues there, but I did make a note after the speakers mentioned that. And I'll follow up with state parks tomorrow and find out what's going on. I just don't have any update for you right now.
I was also going to say that, you know, it was the preference of a lot of people, you know, in the surfing community, that the breach happened there and actually be, be managed there and put there in times when it's not there. So I know that a lot of surfers are very fond of the fact that the breach is going on there just for how it distributes sediment among the point for surfing. But I think the, the priority in that needs to be the, the health and safety of everybody. So if there's, if there's any information from the county, you know, we ought to try to get that out as well. And I don't know, you know, true or untrue, you know, the hazardous nature of that and what that is. I'm, I'm unaware of that at this time. And that is it. I saw Jefferson raise his hand.
Yes, Jefferson.
Thank you, Mikey. Thank you. I really appreciate you addressing that, Skylar. If you had walked, had the time to walk the, the Third Point Breach, it was about 60 yards off the fence from the colony, just off to the eastern side of the lifeguard tower known as Third Point area. If you noticed that the mullet and the fish that normally are congregating in the lagoon were all near the breach on the full moon night of Friday and Saturday. The full breach did not take place until Sunday evening. And the fish population went straight out into the ocean. Otherwise, we would have had a huge fish die off, once again, because of lack of oxygenation of the waters in the lagoon. So because we did do a lagoon project years ago, and it's still under the auspices of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, various other agencies that have oversight, quite often, the science is whose scientists you buy and whose scientist you favor. But the lagoon is much healthier with that breach happening when that water accumulates to such degree that the oxygenation has ended. So those mullet did get into the ocean. It was smelly, it was ugly. Usually it occurs curiously around Third Point to save the Adamson House. And it's usually around full moon. Well, thank you for those observations.
Thank you, Jefferson. Skylar, were you finished?
Yes, I'm finished. Thank you, Mikey.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank all the speakers, a few comments. I noticed a theme here and I think it's a valid theme. I think Hamish brought it up really well. We can't sit back and do nothing. I, I can speak for myself. That's the last thing I'm doing. I'm working on city stuff every single day. But how do you make that? I don't know how to exactly make that transparent all at once. But I want you to know that on all these issues, not all of them, and I want to talk about that, I'm in constant conversations and I care about this stuff. And I hear you, I hear you. I would say to Judith that that issue, please, anytime to anyone, there's a public health issue that you're worried about, please get ahold of me or somebody immediately. Because those, that's really important, such as the RVs parked along the beach. It's the same kind of issue. Can't, can't allow that to happen. So as far as, just for me, I'm constantly working on things and to the best of my ability. As far as the candidate who didn't qualify, Aleah, I think it's a total shame. I would totally have loved to have seen her run. I don't know her. I reached out to her before any of this came up and gave her my phone number if she ever wanted to talk. I reached out to her by email afterwards, one of her emails, and said I would pursue this as best I could. And then, as we know, we heard back. So I'm not a lawyer. Pursued it to the best of my abilities. I, I think it's a shame what happened here and I'm sorry to have seen that. Speed humps, I think we all, all share in that. We'll all stay on top of that. What am I missing here? Yeah, and crime in Malibu, crime everywhere. The crowds are overwhelming. I had a personal phone call with Sheila Kuehl to discuss this and ask for more resources and more help. We are taking the brunt of everyone stuck at home, especially on weekends. But I've gone out on a Tuesday and there's not a single parking spot on Broad Beach. The pocket beaches up west are completely inundated with a mile of traffic. Point Doom, like nothing we've ever seen. Malibu Road, it's really mind blowing and it's really overwhelming. And I don't have a perfect answer to stopping people coming to Malibu, but we've asked for more resources. We're constantly on that and it's, it's still a lot of cars. The sheriffs have never seen this people, many people coming. So Sheila said she was offering help and I asked for more help picking up trash. The amount of trash is overwhelming. So I hear you and I will keep on it. And I appreciate the people that have texted me photos that I can pass on, whether it's graffiti or, or trash or whatever it is. But please, I appreciate your help and a lot of people are helping. But yeah, it's a lot. It's an absolute lot and I hope I didn't miss anything there. And obviously, yes, on Norm, we all feel the same way. I don't think there's any disagreement there at all. Okay, hopefully I didn't miss anything there. Couple more notes. It's been mentioned already, but fire season is already completely out of control. If you're watching the news, Northern California is getting absolutely slammed. Super worrisome to me. I hope everybody is actually getting prepared. I hope everyone has a plan. I hope you have two weeks worth of food if you need it. I hope you have a family plan on what you're going to do. I hope you have ready, set, go, ready and set to go. I hope you have a family plan on what you're gonna do. I hope you have ready, set, go, readies and set to go. That you know what you're grabbing if you're out the door, how you're gonna communicate with loved ones, what you're gonna do about your animals in case of a fire or other disaster. Yeah, I, call it what you want, but we've never seen climate quite like this. And it appears to me, just from my observations, that it's having a huge impact, not just in the California, not just in Malibu, just all over, all over. Very worrisome, absolutely. A question I have that I asked Reva earlier, I just want to raise, it was a really, I thought a good question and needed refreshment on, was we're coming up on the two-year anniversary of the Woolsey Fire. And I just want to make sure we're detailed here on, there's two issues. We're doing the fee waiver, which we're, we're looking at as we go. But there's also the two-year that you are considered a, a burn, a burnout, and you get the expedited processing. So talking to, because this was brought up by somebody in the city, and it's a great point. As I understand it, after two years, then you have to go to the planning commission to apply, to get granted to be treated as a Woolsey Fire burn down. And I guess now thinking about it a little bit more than our conversation earlier, Reva, is there a way we can extend that without it going through the planning commission? Because we have so many people stuck in this insurance limbo. And if we burden the planning commission with that, already, it's so hard to get anything going. I just worry about that. Is there something we could look at? Agendaize, talk to Coastal to maybe look at streamlining that a little more?
Bonnie, are you on the meeting? I'm not seeing you. Or Richard Molika?
There's Bonnie.
Those provisions are in our municipal code only, so that is something the city council could make an adjustment to. If you wanted to, for example, make a modification so that an extension request could be granted by the planning director rather than having to go through a public hearing and the planning commission. It would be basically a zone text amendment. It would require planning commission to consider the zone text amendment, make a recommendation, and then you would ultimately adopt an ordinance.
Okay, I, I guess my fear comes from there's just, you know, what, 246 planning approvals? That leaves, I don't know, I know not everyone's gonna rebuild now, but it leaves quite a lot of people that I think are stuck in insurance if I had to pick one main topic. I guess, Bonnie, would you agree that doing something about it would help the, the planning department instead of adding another layer of meetings or agenda items that need to happen?
It would, it would certainly, I, I, yes, I think it would. I think it would allow us to process extensions more quickly, and it would keep the commission's agenda more available for projects that have a requirement for a public hearing.
Okay, thanks. So I would ask city council if there's any consensus to, to bring this back, to move in that direction. I see Jefferson, I see Karen, and I see Skylar. So we have a four and nothing. So I would ask Reva if we can agendize that to bring it back. Is, I know everyone says as soon as possible, but this one's time-sensitive, so I appreciate your, whatever help you can give us on that.
We'll pick out a hearing date for that.
Yeah, the first would be a resolution to initiate, so we could get that on your next agenda and go.
I appreciate it, and I know a lot of other people in Malibu really appreciate it. And I appreciate, I know she didn't ask me to give her name, but I appreciate the resident that brought that up. That was really very helpful. And she contacted me twice, which was great because we get busy and, and I didn't quite understand. I thought she was talking about fee waivers the first time. So thank you on that. I think a lot of this has been covered. We have been working a lot on dealing with crowds, people parking everywhere, towing. We won't give up. We won't stop. It's a lot. The census, honestly, to follow up on Karen, it's bizarre and almost embarrassing. I mean, Malibu is so far below any other city, and it's gonna have a real impact on us. The census is really important to the resources we need. So I urge anyone on this call that hasn't done the census, please go to my2020census.gov. It does take about 10 minutes. It's really not a big deal. And we're way behind every other city in our area. So that and I'm glad to see the skate park will be opening next week. It's been a long haul on that, but there we go. Oh, last thing, under fire prep, please be aware, we have the Malibu Survival Guide, and you can download a copy off the city's website. Or you can contact the city and pick up a copy. We still have some copies left, I understand. So I urge you to do that. If you don't know how to get that or forget what I've said here, feel free to text me or get ahold of me, email me, something like that. Okay, so let's go forward to the consent items. Do we have, oh, Christie, you look like you wanted to speak, maybe?
Sorry, I just wanted to say real quick for those who are not watching, but who are only listening to us, that earlier what the mayor was seeing was each of the council members shaking their head in the affirmative. And in Councilmember Wagner's case, giving the thumbs up in an affirmative to suggest that they also wanted to see that item come back to streamline that decision-making.
Thank you, Christie. I'll try and remember to do a better job on that. And before we move forward, Skylar, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mikey. I just wanted to add, somebody had notified me just in regards to the Surf Rider thing that a person had gotten a pretty severe staph infection recently, possibly or, you know, not related to the beach, but just to, you know, stress to people that are down there and in, around the ocean environment in that area, First Point or wherever, you know, make sure that you clean yourself off, get a good shower in, and, you know, some good soap after you surf down there, especially when, anytime the creek's breaching and to take some precautions with that.
Thank you, Sky. Okay, moving forward on the consent item. Heather, do we have any items that are being pulled by the public?
3B4 and 3B6 were pulled by the public.
Okay, do we have any items city council members want to pull? Yeah, Skylar?
I'll just make a motion to approve the consent calendar, pulling items 3B4 and 3B6.
Okay, you're seconding Jefferson? I think I interrupted you by accident.
Yes, seconded by Councilmember Wagner.
Okay, can we have roll call on this, please?
Mayor Potem Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Listen, Carrie.
Okay, let's go to 3B4, staff report, and then we'll hear our speakers.
Good evening, council. This item is for an on-call traffic engineering services. This is a consultant service that we use on a ad-needed basis to do traffic engineering, to look at traffic issues and give us advice and solve, solve kind of traffic issues that we need. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have public speakers on this item?
One, Ryan Embry.
Okay, excellent. Hi, Ryan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My question had to do with the staff report saying that there was a selection committee which reviewed all of the four, I think it was, or six bidders. And that, my question is, who comprised or the committee? As far as is this staff picking staff consultants? Or were there council members on this review committee that chose which recommendation would be before you tonight to continue the same traffic engineering company? As what is the, just to be transparent, what is the process? Who picks how many members and who they are, what their qualifications are? And, and how you arrived at that? And if you could name the people who were on the committee? And if you could rank the four or six bidders in the order, is some point scale or some reason to justify the recommendation of one over the other?
Okay, thank you, Ryan. We'll go back to council here and see what we got. Okay, no other public speakers?
No, that was the only one.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, we're back to the council. Yes, Jefferson.
I did not have any comments on this, and I only read it when it became part of my packet last week. I would say we'd probably refer back to Rob or somebody that actually coordinates this activity and ask them for determination on how it's done. Thank you.
Rob, any comments here?
Yes. So what we do is, we have a selection committee that I have my staff. I have other people within the city on, actually, review proposals, review consultants. And we come up with a ranking system on who's the most qualified consultant to do this task. Looking back on this, this particular project, I believe we had a few of our public works staff, I think we may have had a planning staff member involved with the selection committee. And at the time, I don't have the data right handy on who was ranked first or second or third, and I don't just, I don't have that handy data right now. But I'll be happy to get that to you if council wants it. But, and at the time when we, you know, we look at all of the qualifications, the selection committee did select Kim Lee Horn as the most qualified consultant to do this work.
Right, thank you, Rob. Ryan, if you like, send Rob an email, and I'll let you guys take it from there, if that's all right. I don't want to dump it on you, Rob, but that's kind of what I got on that item.
I can do that.
Okay. Is there any more discussion or a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve item 3B4.
Have a second?
I'll second.
It was a tie. I'll give it to Karen since she was verbal. And can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Potem Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Listen, Carrie.
Okay, let's go to 3B6 now. Can we have a report on the CDBG agreement with the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Oh, I'm, I have a brief, very brief report. The August 10th meeting counts $7,000 of CDBG and special COVID-19 CDBG funds for the Boys and Girls Club to provide childcare services and remote learning support during the pandemic. What you have before you tonight is a requirement of those CDBG funds. The city must enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Boys and Girls Club so that we can send the funds to them. So there's no fiscal impact on the city. We are just, we will pay the Boys and Girls Club on their invoices and then the city gets reimbursed by CDBG. I'm here for any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you very much, Lisa. We have public speakers on this?
We had one speaker signed up, a Daniel Morales, who does not appear to be in the meeting.
Oh, no. That's too bad.
I make a motion to approve item 3B6.
Jefferson, is that a, you're seconding, or are you asking a question?
I was going to ask a question, Mikey, if I may, very.
Please, of course.
We have something before us here that possibly could have an avenue for Norm's contributions. I was wondering if the city attorney might deliberate on that or give us a kind of an idea if we could use the same mechanism for contributions that the Norm Haney Hotel had proposed for the Boys and Girls Club. Would this be the mechanism, or could something like this be crouched and tattered to help Norm get his money to the Boys and Girls Club? Thank you.
This is a CDBG grant, so it has a specific set of rules associated with it. But it certainly doesn't preclude the city in any way from using part of the development agreement as a public benefit to earmark funds from that process to the Boys and Girls Club as well.
Thank you. Perfect. I appreciate that very much.
Can we get a second on the motion, or is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I think Jefferson's hand was up first that time, so I'll give it to him. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Potem Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes, and I want to just clarify that this was, to pass this item, we didn't actually say what we were doing here. So this is an affirmative. So yes.
Nothing, Carrie.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to item 6A. And this is the 5G wireless technology and small send, a small cell, sorry, report. It's a receive-and-file report. Can we have that report, please?
Good evening again, everybody. Tonight, we have asked our telecommunications consultant, Dr. Jonathan Kramer with the Telecom Law Firm, to prepare a brief technical memorandum on 5G and small cell technology. It was not, it was intended to be an overview so that, and then he is here at this meeting so that you can ask any particular or specific questions you have. The Telecom Law Firm is the firm that the city uses to outsource some of its, well, most of its review of wireless applications. And at this point, I'll hand it over to Dr. Jonathan Kramer.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. I'm Dr. Jonathan Kramer. I am a senior partner at Telecom Law Firm. And as Bonnie was saying, I was asked to prepare a short report regarding what is happening with 5G. What it is basically, how did we get here? And I'm sure you've had a chance to review. I'm sorry, there are a couple of typos that crept in, and I'll provide a corrected copy to staff tomorrow. Presuming that you've had the opportunity to read it, I'd like to take just a minute or two to talk about what's happened since I wrote the memo, because it turns out quite a bit has happened. Most notably, on August 12th, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals released a decision that was argued by our firm and others in February of this year regarding the legality of the FCC small cell rules. Now, this is important because small cells are an integral part of 5G deployment. And basically, what the court said was that the FCC rules were justified as to shot clock, as to fees, as to attachments, but not as to aesthetics. And I'm particularly proud because we were the ones that argued against the FCC's aesthetic rules. So what does it mean? It means that we have pretty much more, but not unreasonable amount of aesthetic control, at least for the moment, over small cells going into the public right-of-way. And again, this is far and away going to be the biggest issue because small cells, which are the foundation of 5G, produce short-range coverage. But they provide a lot of coverage capacity within the areas that they cover. We're gonna see a lot in Malibu. We're gonna see hundreds and frankly, more than hundreds in Malibu over the next couple of years. That's oh. Because most of
The irony of this.
Yes, exactly.
Dr. Kramer, you're, you're cutting in and out. We've lost your video and your audio is cutting in and out. Or do you need to plug something in, or?
Uh-oh. Well, there he goes.
Well, I'm
That's better.
I'm on a hardwired 200-megabit connection, so it's spectrum, you know, judge that as you will. The bottom line for all of this is there's gonna be a lot of 5G coming into Malibu and other jurisdictions. Right now, it seems that on the west side, Santa Monica is getting those applications, but it's just a matter of time. So that's important. At the same time, we have also, our firm has sued the FCC on some of its 6409 regulations that allow cell sites to be modified by right. So this is a moving target. There's a lot of litigation involved. So this is a moving target. There's a lot of litigation involved. I'm glad that we're able to be at the center of it, but as for the reality of it, 5G is coming, and along with it are going to be a lot more cell sites.
Can you maybe address the health aspects a bit? Which is, I think, the major concern in all the maybe 100 emails we received.
I need to give you the legally correct answer as a telecommunications attorney. In any other setting, if we were not a city, we would have far more authority in this area than we do. In 1996, Congress delegated sole national authority to the FCC to create the RF safety rules, and we're required to follow them. Now, I will tell you that Malibu, more than most jurisdictions, reviews compliance issues with projects that come in for compliance with the FCC rules. You do much more than most. But we're not allowed to consider the health effects of wireless transmissions, whether it's 1G or 5G, or any G. We're constrained by federal law and FCC rules to only evaluate whether a site complies. I'm not a health physicist. I don't claim to be one, but I'm a lawyer, and I read the law, and I know the extent that we're allowed to go at local levels. So while there is great public concern about health, it is a concern that the city, in its capacity as a zoning authority, can't consider. And it's a very unsatisfactory answer. But the problem is that you, as a council, and the planning, the planning commission, and all of the people who make these decisions are legally bound to follow the federal rules here. So the right forum for these questions are the FCC. And as you may know, there is a major lawsuit against the FCC currently going on regarding the adequacy of the standards and members of Congress who delegated that authority to, to the FCC. So when you ask me about health, I have to respond about law because we are, we are under such heavy constraints. And the public's concerns are well-understood, and I believe that they're genuine, but it's not something that any city can address without actually violating, in most cases at least. In any decision you make that you take into account health considerations rather than compliance with the FCC rules, you run the risk of being sued, most likely unsuccessfully, in federal court. Not a very good answer, is it?
Yeah, that's a tough one. Now, as, I'm sorry to ask questions. We want to get to public speakers. I just want to qualify it for everybody as we go. As I understand it, though, we can set aesthetic and safety sort of parameters on that, right?
This is, this is very true. We are allowed to establish, and, and Malibu does have safety standards that are generally applicable. The FCC says you can have generally applicable safety standards. For example, electrical code, building code, inspections, all of the usual things that are generally applicable to people who construct facilities in Malibu. As for aesthetics, we actually did get a good win at the Ninth Circuit. The FCC said in their rules that we had to have basically objective standards that, that kind of one group of standards fits all, and you could articulate what the standard was. Now, the problem with that is, as everyone knows, Point Doom, the, the homes in Point Doom are a little bit different than the homes in, in, say, the Riviera, whatever. And there isn't one cookie cutter here. So we do have more aesthetic control than we did a month and a half ago, which is good. How far that will go? We're not allowed to make our aesthetic standards so onerous as to effectively prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of service. If we said, for example, all antennas must be underground to be aesthetically pleasing, we'd lose, because antennas have to be above ground. So there's an interplay to aesthetics, and there's an interplay to safety, compliance with safety codes. But I would be simply incorrect to tell you that, that we have the pendulum swinging in our direction. The wireless industry has been astoundingly successful in getting the FCC, almost as the FCC's the FCC is, in many ways, favored the wireless industry as a promoter, as opposed to the FCC acting as a regulator, but that's, that's my own view. But that's the state of the law, and as most local jurisdictions agree, we can't, just as we expect our citizens to follow the local laws that a city creates, we're expected to follow the laws that come from the state and from the federal government.
All right, thank you, Doctor. I appreciate your report, and let's get to the, the speakers. Heather, I know we have quite a few. Should we start that, please?
Yeah, and I'm going to read them in order, and then we'll swing back up to the top and start. Nicole McGinley, John C. McGinley, Lori Gord, Lonnie Gordon, sorry, Liz Barris, Jerry Churchill, June Shanty Louts, Jeffrey Louts, Haley Louts, Charlotte Louts, Jenny Rusenko, Darlene Dubre, Jessica Isles, Linda Gibbs, W. Scott McCullough, Billy Grace McGinley, Kate McGinley, Daphna Tackover, Michael Baum, Monique Gilb, Julie Levine, Romi Rappaport, Carrie Klasby, Paula Murphy, Andy Lyon, Susan Foster, and finally, Ryan Embry. So we'll start with Nicole McGinley.
Thank you.
May I ask that my children go? They're way down on the list, and I would like for them to get to go on to their bedtimes.
Yeah, I think that's fine, Nicole. That'd be great. As long as we get their names, please.
Did we lose her?
I don't know. Oh, wait, there she is.
Hi. Hello?
Hi, what, hi, what's your name?
Hi, my name is Billy, and I'm here to talk about our little buzzing friends, the bees. I think it was a year ago when a hive of bees decided to move into my special tree fort. At first, I wasn't so sure how much I liked having them up there, but over time, as I watched them work together, my heart opened for the bees. And today, the thought of small cell killing them is very hard for me. Only together can we keep them, along with so many other pollinators, safe from electromagnetic frequencies. Thank you for keeping the bees safe.
Thank you, Billy. Appreciate it.
And then next would be Kate McGinley.
Great.
Hi, my name is Kate, and from my perspective, the hardest thing about 5G is what it does to our pollinators. I have been seeing more birds and bees dead than usual. If radio frequencies are killing the pollinators, without them, we will not be able to reproduce trees and plants. Without trees and plants, we will get less and less oxygen per year. Thank you for saving our pollinators and our future.
Thank you, Kate.
Okay, would you like to go right into me?
Yes, yes, Nicole. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so hello, all. I'm a Point Doom resident, and first of all, I'd like to thank you for dedicating your time and energies to our community. My family has always felt welcome to speak at council meetings and knowing that we're amongst neighbors and friends. In February, you all got invitations from me when I hosted an expert, Daphna Tackover, for a Q and A on 5G at Malibu Elementary. I was grateful that Adrian Fernandez attended, along with so many neighbors. We ended up with 60 signed petitions, seeking an update on our city's wireless ordinance, and you've recently received more e-petitions, I'm sure. When I first heard 5G, like most of us, I thought it meant better cell reception. In Malibu, that'd be a good thing. Well, I discovered this new technology enhances data transfer, not cell reception. I learned in the 1996 Telecom Act that the FCC basically became a self-regulating commission, self-regulating, rolling out new technology in our communities before conclusive sound studies purported them safe. I learned firefighter unions statewide and locally have fought and won to eliminate the placement of cell towers on or near fire stations. Yet Telecom is willing to put these antennas on our neighborhoods within 20 yards of another. I learned other counties and cities are waiting for conclusive studies before adopting 5G. I realized I would not be able to sit back and watch this technology roll out without finding ways to protect my children, our community environment, and homes. I looked into our city's ordinances and learned that it desperately needs updating. As fellow community members, I have no doubt that each and every one of us would like to protect our community from the unintended consequences of these advancements. I ask myself, is being introduced, is what's being introduced to us going to end up detrimental? And are we going to be left wondering why we didn't do something when we could? As neighbors, friends, and representatives, I appeal to you to learn from the experts and order a cease and desist resolution. Our hands are not tied. Before the verdict was out on Roundup and Glycosphates, I never chose to use them because I didn't want to wait and see if it really was okay. I'm glad I had that choice to battle my weeds the way I wanted to. Before the verdict was out on cigarettes, I remember smoking and non-smoking sections. You could choose what section you wanted to sit in. When that wasn't enough, legislation protected people to have smoke-free common areas. If you wanted to, you could go and smoke outside. My issue with small cell is that if poles are in such close proximity to one another, I will not have a choice to be exposed to them or not. And I guarantee one of us is going to have an antenna too close to our homes because it's already happened here on the point. I can hardwire my home and use Ethernet. I can turn my cellphone off at night, but I can't turn off a cell tower. Let's update our ordinance to protect our community to the fullest extent.
Next, we'll hear from John McGinley. Are you there, John?
Oh. You're on mute, John. Oh, there you go. I can hear you now.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having us. My wife, Nicole, and I have been educating ourselves on this issue for the past 18 months. And when we heard that sites will need to be placed within 200 yards of one another, we could not get past the fact that this means the small cell antennas will have to be in someone's front yard, or near a school, or a playground, or a workplace, sometimes literally a few feet from homes and children's bedrooms. Knowing proximity matters, especially after learning that our firefighters, local and statewide, fought and won not to have pole placement on or near a fire station. Why then would it be okay in neighborhoods? We noticed Canaan and PCH were getting a lot of new small cell antennas, but ever since the pandemic, we've had a boom of installations in our neighborhood. In this one intersection of Doom and Gray Fox, three of the four corners have small cell antennas on them. Please show the next photo. These are the close-ups, all next to my neighbor's homes, people I care about. And now, knowing what we know, we cannot turn a blind eye. Possibly, our neighbors were uninformed. Perhaps they didn't notice the installations, or maybe our neighbors were not aware of the havoc that this small cell technology can create in their lives. Please slowly scroll through the next three photographs. Here are some others that are new to me on Point Doom. Again, I want to highlight the proximity to my neighbor's homes. Scroll through the rest of the photos, please. We only had to drive a scant 15 minutes to take these because they are everywhere on the PCH, and especially close to homes on the PCH in eastern Malibu. These antennas are called "small" to imply that they are harmless. The opposite is true. They may be physically smaller than the big cell towers, but they're very powerful, and since radiation drops by the square of the distance as the result of their proximity to our homes, they exponentially increase the levels of radiation in our environment. In fact, experts who measure the radiation from similar antennas find that at certain locations, the radiation near the antenna exceeds even the Telecom captured FCC guidelines. These antennas should not be allowed in residential areas and close to our homes and schools and parks. As Nicole suggested, people can turn off their cellphones, but they cannot turn off the cell towers. We should ensure that locations are chosen carefully according to pre-established criteria to minimize their deployment in Malibu. To be clear, these antennas are not about covering gaps in reception. Instead, they are intended to support the internet and collect data in violation of our privacy. Privacy is paramount to many of us in Malibu. The FCC has aggressively limited our powers to regulate 5G. The FCC has also limited our right to object to the installations of these harmful antennas based on health effects. It is it is crucial that Malibu adopt an ordinance that maximizes the protections available to the city and its residents. Further, we ask that the city pass a cease and desist resolution that calls on Telecom to discontinue the deployment of 5G in Malibu until proven safe. Other cities have done so. We should all unite and do what we can to fight back. Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Nicole.
Next, we'll hear from Lonnie Gordon.
Lonnie, are you there?
The host muted me.
Oh, there you are, Lonnie. We hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for moving our issue to an earlier time slot. It is really very much appreciated. Now, I love technology as much as most of us do. I transformed a paper-based business to a computer-based business. I've used Wi-Fi and cellphones as long as they've been available, and I never gave a thought to being in a board meeting surrounded by these devices. I also worked in the criminal courts building downtown on the 18th floor, which had a microwave dish on the roof with repeaters on nearby buildings. Then I got sick with an illness doctors couldn't diagnose at the time. I won't go into all the symptoms, but it went on for years, and I was in bed at one time for almost three years straight. My living space is now hardwired, and I'm back to living again unless I'm around EMFs and RF radio frequency waves, which is very difficult to escape anywhere but at home these days. As a person who's been injured by EMFs, electromagnetic frequencies, and RFs, I know firsthand the danger of our current technology and the new technology that's now being forced on us by the telecom industry. We formed MalibuForSafeTech.org to address these issues and to make all Malibu residents aware of what is now a proven danger to them. We're asking for the city for a moratorium and to update and amend its wireless ordinance to protect its citizens. Many cities such as Petaluma and Sanitas in Los Altos have already taken these steps. MalibuForSafeTech.org is asking for a halt to any further installations until they can be proven to be safe, which currently they cannot. And we'd like to schedule a study session set up with council and staff, including the planning department, to educate you about this important issue. Many studies have been done on the general population, not just people with EMS, that's electromagnetic sensitivity, to evaluate potential effects from exposure to radiation from cell towers, cell phones, smart meters, and other wireless sources. These studies have indicated many people in the general population who do not identify themselves with EMS are experiencing the same symptoms which E- are experiencing the same symptoms which EMS people report. These findings suggest that many people are not aware that their symptoms are resulting from wireless sources. These studies also indicate that if the levels of radiation continue to rise and assuming that the exposure of the population continues, the entire population may develop EMS. Do you have headaches, ringing in your ears, fatigue, heart palpitations, or sleep problems? These are just a few of the symptoms. I started sending an information about this in April of two thousand and nineteen to the city council. I hope to inform the council so that they would stop these permits from being approved. I see many of the permits were applied for under the guise of upgrading their current cell coverage. Now, these ugly and dangerous cell sites are all over Malibu, and this poses serious risks. Lonnie, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Next, we'll hear from Liz Bears.
She doesn't appear to be in the meeting.
All right, let's see if we can find her towards the end then.
Jerry Churchill?
Hi, this is Jerry Churchill, and thank you very much. I'd like to thank the city council members. I know all of you personally, and I know how passionate you are. And please know that your work is appreciated. I want to talk about two things about these small cell wireless telecom facilities. It's very disheartening that I can't talk about the health aspects, as the doctor was saying. But I'd like to talk about them being an eyesore and also a fire danger. If you, where I live, we actually have our utilities buried. So we have the very good fortune of looking out and seeing no utilities. And when I look at the picture in front of me, I cannot imagine waking up one day seeing this monstrosity of an eyesore in front of us. And that's exactly what they are, our eyesores. The aesthetics, as mentioned before, and reputation of our city are a major factor in our appeal to new businesses and property value and tourism. The other thing I would like to talk about is fire safety. And I know personally, I've been here with all of you, you know, through the Corral Canyon fires, when almost every house on our block burned down except ours, the two thousand and seven Malibu Canyon Fire, and then most recently, the Woolsey Fire. And these are all terrifying, terrifying events. But one of the issues with these small cell wireless telecom facilities is fire danger. And the telephone poles, that the, I mean, I know they're called small cells, but they're not so small. The telephone poles deteriorate with time. And the extra weight of this equipment that they're installing makes these older poles top-heavy and makes them ripe for falling in high winds. And so I just ask that you consider it, and thank you for hearing our remarks.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next, we'll hear from June Shonky Luke.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Council. Our cells cycle in waveforms with smaller waves nested within waves. Can you show the picture, please? Breath is a natural carrier wave that enhances our well-being and affects all our other wave patterns in our body. 5G is not a natural wave pattern. Heather, do you have the picture? It is not. I sent it to you today before noon.
I don't control that, but I'm sure our tech team will get on it.
Okay, oh, sorry. 5G, thank you. 5G is not a natural wave pattern. It is not part of our natural habitat. Our bodies might appear to be an accumulation of material elements, but below the surface of materialism, all of these organic elements are all guided by waves, internal waves as well as external waves, from the nutritive forces of the sun, air, water, and earth to the waves of all of our body's systems, like heart rate, body temperature, variable heart rate, hormonal cycles, digestion, stress level, relaxation, and metabolism. Even at the cellular level, we have recently discovered that DNA and RNA, stem cells, and even minerals all resonate in cycles as waves nested within waves. Can the 5G airwaves affect humans, insects, and animals? I question that the unnatural waves of EMFs, whether they be 5G or 6G, which is coming, compromise our body's systems and ability to support our fullest experience and brightest potential. Until we understand the generative life forces around us, I urge this council to invoke the precautionary principle. How can we possibly allow a cell tower every two hundred yards in our community until we clearly understand the implications of electromagnetic fields on all life? With the recent electrical storms, firestorms, COVID, a second pandemic around the corner in the same year, clearly, we don't have all the facts. We don't understand the nature of nature. Should we question the environmental cost of putting cell towers up every five hundred yards? Do we want to invite that level of electrification? Can we educate our children using hardwired Ethernet? Does more cell towers really support our evolution? Please, Council, let's do an inquiry on this before we allow the telecom industry to free-range on our sacred home here in Malibu. Do the Goliath corporations have our best interest at heart? Or is it profit margins? Could telecom and Goliath corporations be hoping that we are so lulled to sleep by material comforts that we fail to protect ourselves from our primal freedom of natural airwaves? It is up to Malibu to stand up for our freedoms and not allow our children and those with a low immune systems and EMS to be the guinea pigs. We need to consciously come together as a city and decide on boundaries with the telecom industry. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, June.
Next, we'll hear from Jeffrey Blauks.
He is still on a flight from New York.
Okay, thank you, June.
Are Haley or Charlotte going to speak?
Yeah, Charlotte.
Okay.
Yeah. But she's not here. Hopefully, she's logging on.
I don't see her yet, so we'll swing back around to her in a bit. And next in line would be, let's see, Jenny Rosinko.
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jenny, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good evening, City Council, and thank you for allowing me time to speak. As a Malibu resident, sometimes it's frustrating when my cellphone doesn't work. I think we've all experienced this. We all want to have functioning phone service, but we also want to properly regulate how and where cell towers should be installed. The fifth generation of technology is not about better phone reception, but instead about the capability to transmit more data. Having a 5G small cell tower in front of my house will not make my cellphone work better. While the Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six outrageously took our rights to regulate the placement of cell towers based on environmental considerations, it doesn't preempt the ADA and the FHA. It's incredibly important that we accommodate those in our community who have been injured. Sadly, because of the 5G deployment and especially because of the proximity of the small cell towers to people's homes, it's likely many more will become sick and will require accommodation. I recently received one of those yellow postcard-sized notice of application flyers in my mailbox. I almost tossed it, thinking it was just another filming application. Thankfully, I took the time to read that it was instead "an application to replace an existing wireless communication facility consisting of two antennas, remote radio units, and associated electrical support equipment attached to a replacement utility pool of equal height to the existing pool, including a site plan review to install and operate replacement wireless communication facility in the public right-of-way." Those are the exact words from the flyer. And it sounds so benign, just a replacement wireless facility. But this pole is located directly across the street from my house. And after hearing all the research that's been done and attending the meeting back in February, I know there is nothing benign about 5G. And we've also heard from the other speakers about that. The pole, as I said, the pole in question exists across the street from my home. I have a next-door neighbor who has an eight-year-old epileptic daughter who is highly EMF-sensitive. A small cell tower will negatively affect her health. I did hear and understand what the doctor said about health concerns not being a valid argument with the FCC, but still felt it was important to share this very personal effect in my community. I ask the city to please cease and desist and update our wireless ordinance to protect our community. Also, by overloading these poles with these small cells, the telecom companies are not just putting our health in danger, they're also putting us in fire danger. I just can't imagine one person in this Zoom meeting that would like to have a small cell tower planted in front of their home. Thank you again for your time and consideration of this serious health, fire, aesthetic, environmental risk to our community.
Thank you, Jenny.
Next, we'll hear from Darlene Duprey. Doesn't appear to be in the meeting, so we'll come back.
Circle back. Yeah, thank you.
Jessica Isles.
Hi there. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, thank you for bringing us on the agenda. So it looks like we have a problem. I mean, we have a problem as a city, as a community, and frankly, as a country. We have an FCC that's self-regulating. And there are obviously significant health issues that 5G causes. The lawyer sort of highlighted that we can't talk about health issues, but apparently there are other issues, namely something like aesthetic and decorative purposes. But I also read, and he can look into this, or maybe he knows already, that apparently you have to show a need, that the community needs, there needs to be a need. Well, because this is, you know, a technology which helps us with things rather than communication, how can they justify a need, especially if the community itself says there is no need? So just looking at ways to get around a federal regulation which controls our small town, you know, this federal overreach, which tells us what to do all the time. How do we get around something like this in order to postpone it and to take that precautionary principle while it's being looked into? If the FCC is being sued, let's do what we can, because these things are very ugly, to postpone by potentially updating our ordinances in any way we can until these lawsuits are over. The FCC won't be able to hold on to a regulation made in nineteen ninety-six, I think they said, for that long, surely, since the technology has changed so significantly since then. I was quite upset to hear from one of the speakers that this causes ringing in the ears because my fourteen-year-old son, about four weeks ago, has said, "Mom, I've got ringing in my ears," and became extremely distressed. And he has tinnitus. So where has this come from in a fourteen-year-old boy? So these things, and apparently, these companies, they aren't responsible for any of the health effects that their technology can cause. So I think we do hit that big fat pause button. However we do it, as they say in Santa Barbara, they manage to do it somehow. You know, we've been talking about burying electricity lines in Malibu due to fire risk. So if we bury our electricity lines due to aesthetic reasons, what then for these masts? If we believe that aesthetically telephone poles and wires and electricity, all of that is unsightly, then we believe it's unsightly for all antenna. So that is something perhaps we can look at. Also, obviously, we bury the electricity for safety reasons.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
The next speaker.
Jessica.
Linda Gibbs. Don't see her in the meeting right now, so we'll come back. Double U, Scott McCullough.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Thanks. Great. Um, my name is Scott McCullough. I'm a telecommunications lawyer, been practicing for quite some time. And I'm sort of the designated person to respond to Dr. Kramer. I hope you will bear with me if I both agree and disagree with many of the things that are in Dr. Kramer's report. I'm here on behalf of many of the residents that you're hearing from tonight. And so, you know, obviously, understand I'm here in an advocacy role. But at the same time, I want you to hear the perspective and the legal foundation for many of the arguments that they're making. While I concur in the general proposition that while the city is sitting as a zoning authority in the context of a specific application or permit, the city cannot deny that permit based on perceived health effects to the extent that the applicant adequately shows it will operate in compliance with FCC rules. That does not mean we cannot talk about it. That does not mean the city cannot talk about it. That does not mean the city cannot do other things. And I'd like to outline some of them. Then I would like to give you some suggestions on some ways that you can adequately protect the interests that even the federal government and even the FCC, and certainly now after the Ninth Circuit decision, you can exercise your powers to ensure that your residents' concerns and values are met as best as is possible. Now, let me emphasize, we want Malibu to follow the laws. We want Malibu to follow the federal. Part of the federal law, however, is that you can enter a resolution or a proclamation explaining your disagreement with the federal laws and exhorting your state and federal counterparts, those other legislators, to grant you some relief from the binds that apparently tie you in many respects. The thing I do want to emphasize, though, and that nobody ever seems to really talk about, is the beginning provision in Section three thirty-two C seven A of the Communications Act, which speaks about local zone authority. Except as provided in this paragraph, "Nothing in this chapter shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government over decisions regarding the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities." Now, there are three basic exceptions. You cannot unreasonably discriminate, nor can you prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service. And then third, of course, you cannot deny a permit based on perceived health or environmental effects. But you do have extensive regulatory authority over placement, construction, modification, and in many respects, ongoing operation. You have many rights with regard to what goes on in your right-of-way, both before and after construction. You have wide aesthetics authorities, especially after the Ninth Circuit decision. The key to all of it, however, is having a really strong ordinance that spells out absolutely clearly at the beginning what the rules and requirements are for an application, for what will be required for it to be approved, and what conditions will attach after it is approved, if it is approved. And I know your time is limited, and I want to slip this in, so I'm going to go ahead and do it now. One of the things that you can do to deal with the deemed approved issue, if you for some reason cannot dispose of this within the shot clock period, is to provide in your ordinance that certain conditions that you choose will attach to any deemed approved permit. is to provide in your ordinance that certain conditions that you choose will attach to any deemed approved permit. You can basically prescribe what a deemed approved permit would look like. So you do in fact have a wide range of powers. Certainly, I believe any reasonable court would give you the authority to regulate in the safety aspects with regard to fire and other safety mechanisms. I believe that since you are within the area of the Coastal Commission, you could condition any permit on effectiveness of any permit that's required by the Coastal Commission. There are many things that you can do within a well-constructed ordinance to limit the impact of this, one of which is location. You can establish preferred locations. You can establish prohibited locations, including residential areas or near schools. The only exception is if the applicant proves that that would effectively prohibit it from providing service in that area, then you would probably still have to approve. My final point on this is, and I want to speak in this in legal terms, what the statute speaks to is personal wireless service. It's basically voice, texting, and push-to-talk. 5G is not designed to support that. Voice texting and push-to-talk is an afterthought for 5G. And the demonstration under the Ninth Circuit approved test for a significant gap in service in the least intrusive means to support it is all about the covered, which is the word we use in the regulatory regime, the covered services. They have to show that they have a significant gap in their covered services. They are not necessarily entitled to build a 5G small cell in order to do nothing but support streaming video.
Mr. McCullough, thank you. I am fascinated by this and realize I completely lost track of time. So I would appreciate it, maybe you could connect later or send some of this information, but I need to move on to the next speaker, to be fair.
Next we'll hear from Daphna Tachover.
Yes, this is Saka. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you for, for this hearing. My name is Daphna Tachover, and I'm the Children's Health Defense Director of the 5G and Wireless Home Project. The Children's Health Defense is a nonprofit dedicated to eliminate the sickness among children from environmental toxins. Wireless is one of the most important contributors to the sickness. I'm an attorney in New York and in Israel and have a telecommunications background. I used to be a telecommunications and computer officer in the Israeli military. I'm here representing the Children's Health Defense, but I'm also representing myself as a person who reside in this area and who is using Malibu's roads often. I understand every aspect of this technology and will be happy to answer questions. I gave three lectures in Malibu about the harms of 5G and the wireless in general, and I've been in touch with many residents who have been severely injured, including families with children. You heard many today. The Children's Health Defense has submitted a lawsuit against the FCC for its failure to update its safety guidelines. If you have any doubt about the evidence of harm, you're, I encourage you to go and read the brief submitted by the Children's Health Defense and the Environmental Health Trust. And it refers to thousands of studies and reports, including government admissions and government, government studies showing beyond any doubt that this technology is extremely harmful. The NRDC filed an amicus brief in support of the Children's Health Defense case. And Dr. Birnbaum, who was the head of the federal government National Institute of Health and National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences until 2019, submitted a statement in support of our case. The evidence is clear, and 5G is exponentially increasing the exposure to this harmful radiation, but it will also exponentially increase the sickness. And it is already happening. We're in touch with numerous families, whole families, who became six days after the installations of these towers. And every day I deal with this sickness, and it's quite overwhelming. Mr. Kramer, kind of like maybe you want to believe that your hands are tied. And just as doctor, as Mr. McCullough said, your hands are not tied. There is a lot you can do. And I urge you, please, do the right thing and maximize the protections and every legal avenue open to you to protect the interests of the city and of its residents. For example, while you cannot regulate the health effects or the locations of cell towers based on health effects, you can and should regulate the, the rights, you can, you can regulate and protect the rights of those who have been injured. The ADA, the FHIA, and the California State Disability Laws are not preempted by the Telecommunication Act. Mr. McCullough wrote a comprehensive ordinance on behalf of the residents of Malibu, which provide extensive protections that are not included in Mr. Kramer's ordinances. Father, yes.
That's your turn.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Daphna.
Next is Michael Baum.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Michael, we can hear you.
Hi. I'd like to speak to you from the perspective of a lawyer that worked as part of the trial team for each of the Roundup-induced non-Hodgkin's lymphoma cases that resulted in about over $2.4 billion in verdicts up in San Francisco and Oakland over the last couple of years. Those cases were based largely and sprang from the Internet National Agency for Research on Cancer, finding that the components of Roundup were a 2A carcinogen, which means it was a probable human carcinogen. Radio frequencies have been found in 2011 by IARC to be a 2B possible carcinogen. And that was based on, it was just human data and not animal data. Since 2011, then the National Toxicology Program and the Ramazzini Institutes both found, did detailed animal studies and found that radio frequencies do cause DNA damage in cancers. So if IARC were to rule today, it would be a 1A human carcinogen. That would mean that litigation is coming, just like winter is coming. Litigation is coming on the issue of 5G and any radio frequency induced cancers. And I think that the industry has used antiquated standards and has had their blinders on relative to the IARC findings, the IARC status of what it would evaluate these things today. And have ignored the NTP and the Ramazzini studies. I think that Malibu needs to protect itself from the probable litigation that's coming and that they should demand that the industry indemnify the city from any cases that may be brought. And they should ask to have Malibu insured by the industry for the damage that will likely be coming as a result of what IARC tells us is coming, and that is cancers are going to be coming. So thank you for listening. I'm sure you guys will do the right thing. I usually do. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Next is Monique Gil, but it doesn't look like she's in the meeting. So we'll come back to her and we'll hear from Julie Levine.
Okay, hi, thank you. I'm Julie Levine. I'm the founder and director of a group called 5G Free California. And I live in Topanga and have worked quite a bit with Malibu residents. And I just want to emphasize, I'm not an attorney, but I've been working with a number of cities in the Los Angeles County area. And I want to say first of all that I'm sorry for saying this, but I really do not think that Kramer's your friend. I have seen city after city, and I can name them, okay? Where the city was very concerned about this issue, they were ready to do the right thing. And we had study sessions and everything else. They met with Kramer and suddenly it began about face. And as previous speakers have said, there are really good protective ordinances in city after city across California. Even though it's true that the FCC can sue, they can only recover, they can only, worst case scenario, you have to do the rollout. They can't recover. You can use your, your city attorneys, and they cannot recover any legal fees or damages. The other thing is, in addition to some of the areas where people said you can be effective, especially with a strong ordinance, is nuisance complaints. This is a lot of noise. This is a sound, and it can be extremely bothersome. People hear this like I'm buzzing in their ear. The safety, something that people have spoken to, fire damage. When you look at those above-ground wires and the way they're just laid out all haphazardly, knowing how dangerous a fire season we're in, I do believe we have the responsibility to act. And I want to say that the little I know of the city council in Malibu, I think that you're highly responsible. You have a close relationship with your residents. And I do hope and believe that you will hear them and do something that may be a little more courageous. We can give you a lot of information. Scott McCullough will share his information with you. That's why he's here tonight. Please hear us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Next we'll hear from Romy Rappaport.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, City Council, to, for listening to all of this. I've been a resident here for 25 years and on Point Dume. And it's just so simple. The benefits don't outweigh, you know, the, the risk of what, of what all this is. I had the pleasure of listening to Daphna speak, and she just so clearly gave all the information. And it's just, it's just not worth it. There's just no way. And hearing, I think it was Michael Baum's testimony just now, that's just, it's so important. Everyone's bringing up such important facts. So I just ask that you guys really make the right decision and follow the towns like Encinitas and Petaluma and Los Altos and just do the right thing and keep us all safe as best as we possibly can. We have enough to deal with. And so let's really do the right thing here. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Romy.
Next we'll hear from Carrie Klasby.
Hi, is that you, Carrie?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly. Thanks.
I just want to say thanks to the council. You guys really rock. It's a beautiful thing to see city government to be, every one of you, it's like, thank you very much for your service. I know how much work it is. My perspective is that we have a herd immunity issue. Obviously, when we were using Roundup on our dandelions, we didn't think there was anything wrong with it. And now I have a farmer friend who's got, has one in the Monsanto case, because she's got six months to live. And we don't want this to be our legacy. We have a herd immunity issue as a species. And as a famous doctor said, if the dolphins were all getting sick in the ocean, you wouldn't say there was something wrong with their DNA. You would say the ocean's polluted. So I believe in erring on the, the side of caution. And I would, I think, you know, this, we can all hear the common sense and what everyone's saying. So I would like to suggest, I don't know what this process is, but we have a study group so we can educate ourselves and the council and the planning department about what is real? What is real science? Because this has to be a scientific issue that is true, not based upon pseudoscience. So that's my suggestion, and that's my two cents. And I thank you very much, everyone, for your two cents in this.
Thank you, Carrie.
Next we'll hear from Paula Murphy.
Hi, this is Paula Murphy. And to the council, thank you so much for all that you do for the community. I'm here today to speak against 5G. I don't believe there's enough research about this technology, and I'm not interested in living in a testing area where 5G is installed and we wait and see if there's an increase in cancer rates and other health issues. There are more than 10,000 studies that demonstrate harm to human health from RF radiation. As a Malibu resident and as a parent of two young children, I would like you to halt all further installations until it's proven safe. I understand that there are limitations to what you can do, but I know you have the authority of replacement and aesthetic, and I hope you will attach strict conditions on new locations and existing locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Next we'll hear from Andy Lyon. Andy, are you there?
I was, I was, hey, I was asked tonight to speak about this because of, you know, being a real estate agent and how this affects real estate values. You know, disclose, disclose, disclose. I mean, I'm sure maybe somebody wants to have a 5G in their front yard, but I don't know in Malibu too many people that do. But that's really like a secondary to me as a father. I have a little kid, so it's gonna be three. I have older kids and myself, you know? And I mean, I have a question. It's, I've seen as this whole shutdown and seeing these things already go in all over the place. I see all these guys working. Nobody else is working, but everybody's been putting up cell sites. And I want to know, like, is there already been a benefit to the city through this? Have they been paying fees? Are they going to get a kick out of that? Is that where we have an attorney on this that seems to be saying we don't have really a fight? Is that something that could be possibly happening here? To me, I like what the second attorney said. I'm all about like not saying no. Especially since like, you know, we've got the name Malibu behind us, right? And it'd be, it'd be pretty amazing if, you know, we could use that name other than just like stopping plastic straws, you know? This could be something so huge that we could get the name of Malibu. I mean, this is the whole point of having a name recognition like we do to fight something that's clearly, I mean, to me, you know, if, if it's restricting the aesthetics, I don't know, I mean, silly, like, just the thought is like, you know, hey, we, we get Malibu plastic straws. You have to use Malibu plastic straws on it. They don't exist. Well, you can't have, I don't know. You know, there's got to be a different way to skin this cat. But I know personally, I lived for a while down on top of A&amp;D Hardware. This was about 15 years ago, and Nextel came in. And they put on the biggest repeater station for the whole area down there, because they didn't know that it was, there was two apartments up there. And when the guys put them in, I mean, this, this, the, the, the source of the power and the thing going up right next to my bed by my head, like literally half a foot away from my head, and they had to make it look like a, a chimney on top of A&amp;D Hardware. And the guy installing goes, I can't, you live here? Like, I didn't, like, you shouldn't even be near this thing. I mean, I stayed a little bit longer, but I could feel the effects. My house was buzzing, my head was flipping out. And my kids were with me in this house. And I was like, this stuff is real, like, this, to me, it's, you know, but it's already out here. And I'm wondering, like, what are we, are we, it's already on, right? Is it already on? And how did we get to this point? Now we're going to have to try and find to undo it? Malibu should really use everything that they got at this one and be like, man, we didn't just stop plastic straws. We, we stopped 5G, you know? I mean, that would be pretty insane. That would be something really big to use for the name Malibu. And like our lobbyists that we have, that we pay millions of dollars for, could be thrown at this. I think that's really important issue. A lot of people are concerned. It's not a bipartisan issue. It's like life and death kind of things. A lot of people. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Susan Foster.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, Susan.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I am talking to you tonight as a medical writer and as an honorary firefighter with the San Diego Fire Department. I followed firefighters in a California station for over 15 years. There was a tower installed about seven to nine feet in front of their front door. And many of the men, all of whom had been absolutely healthy prior to installation of this tower, started developing headaches, including migraine. This was from the first day. Some of the men, it took several weeks for them to feel the effects. But it induced in all the men in the station, brain fog, a severe forgetfulness where they would literally be going about a task related to firefighting and forget what they were supposed to do. There were sleep disturbances where they couldn't go to sleep or they couldn't wake up. And that's obviously a dangerous position for a firefighter to be in. They experienced mood swings. They experienced extreme anxiety and depression, emotions they had not experienced before on the job. They also experienced infertility. Three of their wives, over this five-year period when I was initially following them, three of their wives miscarried. And then finally, after five years of putting up with this tower with Nextel telling them there was nothing wrong, that it couldn't possibly be doing any harm. Finally, one of their wives carried full-term, nine months, baby boy, and everybody was thrilled. And on his second birthday, he was diagnosed with autism. I decided to go to Dr. Berner Hoiser, who was then at Cedar Sinai. Asked him how we could prove or disprove whether or not these men were experiencing neurological abnormalities to the point where it would show up in some sort of, of brain scan. And he suggested a spect brain scan, which was injection of radioactive isotopes. And then following, it's followed through the brain and, and certain areas are highlighted in color. We found brain damage in all six men tested. And this was measured, the tower was measured at one one thousandth of what the FCC allows. One one thousandth of what the FCC allows. And these are the strongest of the strong among us. So you're talking about small cells that are going to literally be in the front yards of your residence. I would, I would do several things. I would do a cease and desist to allow the residents to obtain their own attorney, an attorney like Mr. McCullough, like Ariel Strauss in Berkeley with Greenfire. And then that attorney representing the residents could then work with Mr. Kramer, who's obviously representing you and trying to make sure you don't get sued. And that's a noble goal. But, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Next, we'll hear from Ryan Embry.
You're on mute, Ryan, if you can unmute. There you go.
Yeah, I am muted already on the left screen. So as your former Chair of the Telecommunications Commission, before you guys, well, your prior council disbanded it. We were working on a rewrite of the ordinance for telecommunications devices and that just stopped. You, you have an extremely old ordinance and it needs to include some very basic provisions, rather promptly, if not a total rewrite, that would, that will require all future infrastructure for any cell be underground. Because where it is protected from damage, protected against fire and does not take out parking and view obstruction and physical obstruction on a sidewalk, as is shown in one of the pictures in your report tonight. I think it's figure seven. I think it's down in, on PCH. It, it obliterates walking down the sidewalk. So there's safety issues which remain, and I'm going to only address the things that you can currently deal with and not the issues of, of health effects, because the safety issues can be addressed that will help lessen those impacts on the health effects until, until you can. But the safety would be, don't, don't put them on wooden poles. There's evidence in your report tonight showing these regular concrete granite streetlights as supporting structures with metal clamps and not wooden horizontal structures that just, you know, look like two by fours up hanging off of a telephone pole. The hardening that State Senator Andy Stern is, I'm sorry, State Senator Henry Stern is working on has to do with the infrastructure, the wires that would go up the side of the pole and so forth. If you bury that, a lot of it will be hardened by its very structure. What's important in Malibu is to incorporate an alternative power source to the local power. So when our power goes out, these devices work. That is a safety concern. And I'd like you to use the resources of your consultant and get an answer on this tonight on the record. How and can the city condition future sites to require them to have battery backup and bury it in the ground? The applicants also need to substantiate this gap in coverage, which we seem to be forgetting about. Not only did Sprint and T-Mobile merge, and there's a combined footprint, but there has to be a gap in coverage that exists for voice communications. The, the, I need to call 911 and speak about a problem, not send them an email or a text or stream a movie into my house. And lastly, the act was for fixed transmission to mobile use, not fixed location into a fixed location inside your home.
Ryan, that's your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
And now we'll swing back around to Liz Barris. You should be on now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Liz, we can hear you.
Okay, before you start timing me, can I just talk for a second? I think you guys should have, please stop the timer. This is about your system with, um, I think people should be able to raise their hand or something. If you can't hear them, you can't find them. Cause I had the stupid number and I don't know why my name doesn't show. I have to figure out what's going on with that. Anyway, okay, so there's been so much excellent testimony here tonight, really fantastic. Clearly, there are, there are legal pathways here. I respectfully disagree with Jonathan Kramer's insistence that you must take these 5G antennas. But I'm kind of just, I'm just gonna try to add on to the already excellent testimony that's already been given. So a few things, the gentleman spoke about real estate. I just want to throw in there, there's a 20 to 30% decline in real estate value when any of these transmitters are near anybody's house. And you must disclose that in the seller statement. Okay? So regarding the health effects, I got into this because I lived a block and a half from a stealth cell antenna farm. Bunch of antennas on a rooftop in Santa Monica. And I was actually given precancerous cells. I was first getting like the, the woman in the beginning was speaking about her, people were talking about their kids getting ringing in the ears. That's how it started with me, ringing in the ears, okay? Then like loss of energy, you know, feeling like I was 80 when I was not 80, you know, headache. Well, I got diagnosed with precancerous cells. I had surgery post-op. They told me it was stage two. And I'm actually not supposed to talk about it anymore because I'm going to probably be suing on this. I'm currently a plaintiff or petitioner, or I like to call it a plaintiff because it's a lawsuit against the FCC for lying to the public about these health effects. I consulted with the GAO a long time ago, we, when we wrote this letter, they wrote the letter to the FCC. And I had a little bit of input on that regarding federal regulatory oversight of radio frequency radiation. But since then, you know, my, my health effects have just skyrocketed. It's so difficult to get away from this radiation. So I'm just gonna go, go back to, I wanted to make a quick statement that I had it written down. Here it is. Nope, that's not it. Anyway, I'll do it off my memory. When, when a law is created, like Jonathan Kramer stated, when a law exists that actually kills people, okay? That law needs to be changed. All right? So let's, let's, let's say that. And then I just feel like he's trying to scare you. You know, a lot of people have already spoken that you will not collect the, they can't collect attorney fees. Oh, the Newport Beach residents are requiring that Newport Beach carry, the wireless industry is uninsurable. All of the reinsurance companies have bowed out of health effects that are eliminated from all the policies. And the Newport Beach residents are taking, right now, they've already initiated legal action against the city council for not protecting, you know, they, the loophole in the telecom act, which prohibits you, which disgustingly prohibits you from speaking about environmental effects, okay? Human health included in there, all right? Or using that to block the thing. But this loophole is reinsurance. Show me your reinsurance. You need to have, it's so the city is indemnified. And they, they come out with shell companies. They are trying to leave the city holding the bag because they are currently going to Congress for a bailout from their under almost probably a trillion dollars worth of lawsuits right now. They're gonna have to pay every claim out of pocket. One case in Washington DC is like a third of a trillion dollars. The judge put.
Liz, that's your time.
Okay, I, I just encourage you to put ADA and Fair Housing Act into your ordinance. Put it in your ordinance. No cell antennas near anybody with any effects or cancer or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
The other speakers that were missing before are currently not in the meeting. Charlotte Lowes, Darlene Dubre, Linda Gibbs, or Monique Gil. So that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. Now I know this is a receiving file and I see Christie coming on. So why don't I let you speak for a minute just to impart whatever you want to impart on us?
I was actually just tuning in to, to listen, but I do, I could say a couple of things because first of all, let me just say, that's a lot that we just heard. And I know, you know, we're all taking it in and it's hard to process. You know, everything we've heard, a lot of this before, but it's always, you know, emotional to listen to people speak. And so I, in organizing that, I just did what lawyers do. You know, I just try to divide up the information and, and put it in a way that I could be of some assistance to you. And I essentially heard kind of two categories of things that you could consider. One category are the direct things that you could do now, not tonight, because it's not on your agenda, but you, things that you could put city resources to immediately. And then a larger category of action that you could take for the greater good. So the first category were things like putting in to our ordinance, conditions that would take effect if the shot clock runs and something was deemed approved. I know the city goes out of its way to make sure that that never happens. But I think that Mr. McCullough makes a good point. That's a great safeguard to put in. We, the city actually has statutory immunity from any liability when we give a permit. But I think that this suggestion of putting in an indemnification condition, while I don't, I don't think it has a great legal significance because we already have some immunities. I do think it makes a great political point or, you know, communicates our concern in an area that we've been told that we can't govern. So I think that would be something we can look at adding to this. Certainly building code issues, which would include maybe some standards for poles. We've worked on that before. That's something I think that might be helpful. Certainly, we can continue to require undergrounding to the extent possible. Obviously, an antenna has to be above ground, but there's plenty of equipment that can go underground. We've seen that before. So we can certainly take what, you know, I believe is a pretty wholesome ordinance that we have right now and beef it up with some of the suggestions that we've heard. But I think where we really, what, what the bulk of what people have been saying to you tonight is that we, we have as a political problem. And luckily, you guys are politicians. So this is like right up your alley. And it's not that you can just, you know, or draft an ordinance and litigate this problem away. It's gonna take effort. And we've done that before. We did it with redenticides. We did it with sober living. You know, we're not unaccustomed to putting resources into that kind of thing. The first thing that was suggested by Mr. McCullough, I think, is something you may want to consider on a future agenda. And that is, you know, passing a resolution aimed at the providers to tell them that you have health concerns and that you want them to not expand in Malibu if it is going to create health risks and ask them to kind of show you the receipts. You know, ask for the information. It's a political move. It's not regulatory, but I think it adds Malibu's voice and it certainly would, you know, carve out your position if you were to do that. You know, Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer talked earlier about what is essentially agency capture, where you have the FCC acting like an advocate instead of a regulator. And that means that people have to band together, governments and NGOs and individuals to confront the FCC until we get a different administration in there that has more concern about the health effects and less concern about the speed with which we have this infrastructure. And especially in areas like ours where it already kind of exists to an adequate level. At least, most people feel that it is adequate enough. So we would, so that would require maybe putting together a task force, maybe a subcommittee of the city council. You convene some of these experts and people who've educated themselves, both as a study group to provide information, but also as a way to try and come up with an action program for how you want to do this lobbying. Do you want to get a lobbyist in, in DC to help us? Do you want to turn to the National League of Cities to help us? There are lots of ways to, maybe all those things, to build coalitions, to amplify the voices of people who are raising these concerns. Certainly, if we've learned anything, or if I've learned anything in the last 30 years, it's that if Malibu sneezes, you know, the world notices. And so I think that, you know, Mr. Lyons is correct. We have, you know, a voice. It's something that, that we could try and use to amplify. We can look at the possibility of putting in an amicus to the lawsuit that has been discussed. We can work with Senator Stern and in his kind of incremental state solutions. Come about it. Not this, I would have, we'd have to get more information than I have. But there, there sounds like there may be some backdoors we can look at in terms of regulating polls and that kind of thing. So all in all, you know, you're on the agenda tonight to receive and file, but you may want to give staff direction to come back with some agenda items that look at either that first category, which is the beefing up your current ordinance, or the second category, which is coming up with a way to develop an action plan so that Malibu can participate in the opposition to what the FCC is doing.
Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Darlene Dubre is in the meeting now. Would you like to hear from her?
Oh, she didn't speak yet?
No.
Oh, yeah, of course. Let's let, yes, I see that. Darlene, are you there?
I am. Hi.
Hi.
Me, if you can hear me, not letting me.
I can hear you.
Okay. Do you, am I allowed to go on video too?
I.
It says my host won't let me.
You are, you are allowed to go on video, but you have to activate that on your end.
I'm doing it every time. So you cannot start your video because your host has disabled it.
I don't know how that works. I'm gonna have to look for help.
We haven't been allowing that up to this point, so.
That's right. But we can, we can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, well, good evening, council, and thank you very much for being of service to our community. I am unfortunately electro-sensitive now. And those of you who know me, I've not been able to go to the classes at the senior center because of the wifi directly above when the exercises are going on. The main things that I've been learning, because with any kind of illness, you, I've been researching like crazy to minimize it, frequency, duration, and proximity are extremely important when it comes to electrical things like EMF electromagnetic fields. I live in, I live in Malibu. My play is in Malibu. I am on PCH. We are affected in this zone on land due to cell towers or where 5G and Verizon took the tower out. So now instead of having one big tower, every unit in every building not only has wifi, they have boosters. So it's like having many that in your, in your home and your neighbor's home. So you might not know why you have a headache, but you might have your bed adjacent to someone who has their thing right beside you. So that's land. We have it in the air. LAX now goes directly over us. So you can't escape that day or night. So happy to, I'm sorry, guys. I'm happy that there's COVID because the LAX now is not over my head every day. There's also navel. because the LAX now is not over my head every day. There's also naval tech. So it comes from the sea, the air, the land and the sea, and that is extremely high on frequency, the duration and the proximity. There's no escaping. Please maintain, um, protect the, uh, EMF zones. I know there's a sign of, uh, in Solstice Canyon and it says that it was known because they did testing, uh, for back in the day in the 50s, I believe. Um, those are so important, but to get there, it's like a soup. And then to UniPass, you get whammied by the, it's like the mobile park has such crazy things. So to go there, my, my safe zone, um, you can't, you get whammied on the way. And I go and I spend as many hours as I can, those who know me, just to detox. Those who don't live on PCH get their free zones. I can't escape it. There's no escape. Please do whatever you can, everyone. Thank you so much for listening and I appreciate you being there.
Thank you, Darlene. Um, and thank, I want to thank all the speakers. Um, fascinating, to be honest. I, uh, learned so much. I have pages of notes that'll be hard to undecipher quickly, but, uh, um, I honestly knew what I knew about it, but, um, to hear all this testimony was fascinating. And I really, really, we just want to appreciate it. And I want to let my fellow city council people have a chance to speak. And I know it's receiving file, but we got some advice from Christie that was very helpful. So thank you very much. Karen, do you, do you have some comments?
Um, thank you to all the speakers. Uh, uh, I think all of us on the council received a lot of emails. I have some questions for Dr. Kramer. Um, and I, I will go through them in the order that they were brought up. I don't, I'm not saying that this is the order of, um, of importance in my opinion, but just, I, I'll go through my notes. Um, do you have any comments on, uh, fire stations banning 5G installation near them?
Yeah, it's absolutely not true. Here's the real story on that. Uh, back about four or five years ago, Assemblymember Bill Cork up in Alameda floated a bill, Assembly Bill 57, which put deemed approved remedies on certain types of projects. And specifically excluded from that were projects near or on fire stations. Now, there was no ban whatsoever, but there was a simple carve out that that bill didn't apply to fire stations. So it has nothing to do whether a site is approvable. It simply dealt as to whether the project was deemed approved. So there's absolutely no, uh, ban on cell sites on fire stations. In fact, right now with the deployment of FirstNet, we're seeing, uh, wireless facilities going into salt, into fire stations for specifically the purpose that it's near where they want the, uh, the coverage to be.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my next question, uh, there were, there was mention of cities that had banned this installation and I believe some of them that were named were Encinitas, Petaluma, Santa Barbara and Los Altos. Is there something going on with those cities that we could do here?
First off, by way of disclosure, we represent Encinitas. And they have made some decisions and as their legal counsel, we follow their direction. So I, I, I'm constrained to how much I can discuss. And frankly, this is an issue where it's better discussed with your city attorney than in, in an open session like this. I would simply say that I'm a particularly conservative attorney in terms of following the law. And as an example, uh, you've heard discussion here tonight that the city should institute a moratorium. Well, you can, you absolutely can. And the FCC has told us that any moratorium that we put into place has no effect on the shot clock. So it's, it's possible to do and has absolutely no actual effect. So this is a balancing issue where you have legitimate and public interest in doing something. But unfortunately, the heavy-handed FCC has, on behalf of their, effectively their clientele, uh, barred us. So that's just kind of the state of bad things that are happening.
Okay, um, thank you for that, um, information about you representing Encinitas. Do you have any comment on any of the other cities that I mentioned?
You know, I, I would prefer to have that discussion with the city attorney because it gets into matters of legal opinion and I, I don't do legal opinion in open session like this on other jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, do you have any comments on indemnification?
There are actually a number of jurisdictions, uh, that require indemnification. We write them into ordinances that we prepare for jurisdictions. I'm sure that, uh, Christie's firm, uh, does the same thing. Uh, and again, she, she laid out very effectively the fact that we already have indemnifications, but putting it in, probably is not a terrible idea.
Okay, um.
It's more belt and suspenders than anything else.
Okay. And regarding suggestions that were made by Ryan Embry, who was on the, um, I believe it was called telecommunications committee or commission, uh, which, uh, has been disbanded. I don't know when. Do you have any comments on updating local ordinances and hardening? Do you know if that's, uh, something being done in other cities?
Well, first by disclosure, he contacted me this afternoon and I refuse to have anything substantively discussed with him, but I gave him the courtesy of just talking about, uh, the, the meeting tonight. So that's a disclosure. He talked about hardening. I'm not quite sure what that means in terms of actual practice. There are many things that we can do as a jurisdiction that would harden the facility. But for example, undergrounding maybe, may not be one of them. One of the issues that you have to look at is what is the water table? And the water table in one part of Malibu is going to be different than the water table in another. So yeah, these are not broad stroke issues. These are, these are specific issues as to if you can do it, then you do it this way. I think the, uh, uh, let me go back. And he talked about burying cables and so forth. Then those things are largely aesthetic basis. And those are things that as long as they are reasonably adopted and have a sound basis for protecting aesthetics and don't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of service, which was actually one of the other commenters. Then yeah, then that's something that should be considered as part of an, of an ordinance.
Okay, um, and I guess my last question is, um, regarding, uh, Michael Baum's comments about the comparison to Roundup. Do you have any comment on that?
You know, the, the issue that I have with that is here we are subject to, we're commanded to do certain things by the state and federal government. We're not commanding people to use Roundup. It's a, it's, it sounds good as an analogy, but it actually is very far removed. We don't require people to buy Roundup or we don't require them to get approval from a city to use Roundup. And we have, and we're operating, as Christie's already talked, city attorney's already talked about. We're following the law above and we have immunities because of it. So I, I don't, I don't make the, the direct connection that, uh, Mr. Baum seems to make.
All right, um, thank you. Um, Christie, I want to say thanks for, um, your, uh, take on this and your suggestions. Um, the idea of passing a resolution is something that I would be in favor of. As you said, aimed at providers expressing, uh, our concerns on health effects. And if we are to stand up a subcommittee, um, I realize that requires city resources, something that, uh, are becoming, uh, more and more scarce, but that is something that I think the council ought to think about. And I'm not sure if the city has any precedent on, uh, retaining a lobbyist at the national level, uh, for something like, uh, dealing with the FCC. Christie or can anybody tell me, is there any precedent for that?
I'm pretty sure that years ago, we, um, hired someone to try and help lobby for some funds, um, that were becoming available. So it's not unheard of. And there, there are plenty of options. We can bring it back to you if you want to consider it, but there are plenty of options. And even our current lobbyists may have, um, Washington DC connections. So.
Um, okay. And I do want to thank you for, um, the idea of getting an amicus brief. I, I don't know how much it will, it will get us, but I'd like to explore that. Um, so I think for the moment, I'd like to hear, uh, comments from the rest of the council members and then I may have further comments after that. So that's it for me at the moment. Thanks, Mikey.
Thank you, Karen. Jefferson?
Thank you, Mikey. Appreciate that. A lot of information this evening, a lot of concerned speakers with a lot of great wisdom and a lot of great information. I took the liberty on my own to do a little research, which wasn't reflected this evening, other than I did my research on the pollinators and the effects upon pollinators by, uh, 5G, 4G, going down the line. And I think that that is data that should be, uh, admitted into whatever we formulate as a position statement or however we move forward as a city, depending on what the council's pleasure is. I'm glad that Christie identified, uh, Attorney McCullough as a fair resource, as well as some of the things that, um, the, uh, attorney that we hired. They both made good points, um, something that we could adapt to, something that we could formulate in a, uh, as council's opinion. So evidently here we're, uh, at a crossroads with a great deal of detail, a lot of information. And as Christie also said, uh, you're the politician. So where we head with this is up to the council. We, you know, we've received and filed. And, uh, maybe we do expend some resources and look at this in a little more in depth, uh, on both sides of the use. But my main concern was the pollinators and, um, I would like to share that information if we go further into this about the effects upon the pollinators. Thank you, Mikey.
All right. Thank you, Jefferson. Skylar?
Thank you, Mikey. Um, so, uh, everybody, I appreciate all the comments from everyone. I spoke with a few people about this before. I didn't necessarily learn anything that wasn't sent to us via email or anything else like that. I think the, and Christie, um, or, uh, Dr. Kramer, you know, I, I think sort of the, the gist of this is that we can't really do anything. And, or the law says that we can't do anything where we're stating it's an environmental concern or a health and safety concern. Am I correct on understanding that?
Not quite. Here is the subtle difference. We are allowed to condition wireless sites to comply with the FCC rules. And some of the projects that come before the city do not on their face comply with the FCC rules. And the city's been very careful to make sure that that's the case. So it's not that we can't do anything, but we can't go beyond a certain limit. And again, Malibu, more than most is looking at cell sites for RF safety very carefully. And again, not every project that's brought before the city is approvable, uh, as designed. So there's a lot of work that's happening at your planning department behind the scenes to actually fully engage, uh, the issue of RF safety to the maximum extent legally possible.
And I would just add, Councilor Peak, that, um, also a lot of what you heard tonight were people urging Malibu to get into the fight against FCC to remove these constraints. So what Dr. Kramer is saying is here's the most you can do within these constraints. And then what you're also hearing is, but can you use your political, um, to try and, um, reduce some of the constraints?
I think that that would be the, the goal of our constituents would make that happen. And I think that the council would probably unanimously support something like that. So I think that, Christie, you gave us kind of, you know, sort of a clear little outline of what can and can't be done. And I think that we should get consensus from council to bring back an item, um, that, you know, goes over the things that particularly we can do in regards to aesthetics and that, and then updating our, you know, ordinance, uh, to, to reflect that. And being very, I think, sort of clear on what it is that can be done under the current rules. And I think that that's what the council should focus on, um, is, you know, using the, you know, the sort of menu of things that can be done and, and, you know, exhausting those to the, to the fullest extent that, that we believe is legally possible. I think that would be the wisest move for the city. And talking, um, with Dr. Kramer and, uh, Mr. McCullough, I really, really appreciate his time and whatnot and commenting on this and, you know, giving some insight into some different things that can be done. Um, I wish that we could just go flat out and, you know, say that we're not going to have this until, you know, it's clearly proven that it's safe, but it doesn't seem like, I mean, we can ask for that, but it's not necessarily something I think that, um, the city would be probably forced into some litigation with very poor odds if we went down that road. Yes, Mr. Kramer.
And to echo that one step further, and several of the commenters tonight talked about the fact that you have immunity from attorney's fees, which is true. Uh, Abrams, uh, the Abrams case in Rancho Palos Verdes. However, while you may have immunity from paying their legal fees, most of these lawsuits that end up to a decision, it, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars in that range to get to that point. And that's money that isn't coming from the other side to you. So I mean, these, this is not a, well, we don't have to pay their legal fees. You have to pay your legal fees. So that needs to go into the metric of where do you want to spend that money? Do you want to spend it on lawsuits or do you want to spend it on advocacy? Christie's law firm is joining our law firm in terms of suing the FCC. There are a lot of very positive ways, I think, that the, the, the council has already been expressed here can, uh, give its sense not to the carriers as much as to the FCC and to Congress. See, the carriers don't care. These are issues that are in front of Congress and in front of the FCC. And we know the FCC doesn't care. So you look at the lawsuits, the Children's Defense Fund lawsuit that's going on now, you look at our, our lawsuit, uh, our newest lawsuit against the FCC. And in terms of expressing your opinions, whatever they are collectively as a council, those are some things for you to think about.
Right. Thank you. Um, Mikey, I'll just add, maybe after you give your comments, maybe we can have, you know, Christie come back again and just kind of outline the things that we can do. And I think that that'll be valuable for all of us to figure out how we're going to move forward with this.
I agree. I agree. And Bonnie?
I was just going to add that, um, this is the updating of our wireless ordinance is one of your work plan items. So, um, it's, it is something that I believe is funded in the budget and it's on the work plan. And, um, you know, we'll, we're happy to put it in the order of priority that you want us to put it in, um, relative to everything.
Thank you for that input. Um, I'll make this brief. As a planning commissioner, I, we encountered a number of these installations, mostly in Point Doom. And I remember it intrigued me at the time and I spent a lot of time reading it and asking a lot of questions, probably drove Bonnie crazy. I don't remember. It was a number of years ago, but I remember the impact of that because what she informed me, it had to be about aesthetics and safety. And the impact of that was at the time pretty strong in the fact that a lot of those installations disappeared for quite a while for some reason. Actually, I don't know the reason. And I think it took them, I don't know why, it took them a long time to come back. So we did have an impact on that to some degree. And a lot of neighbors really helped. Actually, the neighborhood really initiated that. And that was super helpful. I remember Matt Rapp and a bunch of other people, um, helping us figure this out. So I think, um, I want to, again, I want to thank the speakers. And the reason I want to thank the speakers in particular is the emails weren't as helpful. They were mostly the same email over and over and over again. Um, and as I read it, mostly about health impacts that we really can't, isn't really probably our path at this point. Important email, I read it, um, absolutely. But the context of everyone who spoke here was really valuable. And I learned a lot, and there's a lot more to learn. It was, as was said, an overload. And unless anyone else has comments on the council, I'd like to ask Christie to come back and sort of, since she really seemed to have a good handle, lead us through. There's, I have so many different things we can do here. Need a little help organizing next steps would be appreciated.
Well, I think first of all, we just need to let Bonnie know what kind of priority you want to give to this. I don't know what else is in line in front of it. So that may have to come back to you to reprioritize. But the ordinance will take into account some deemed approved conditions. That means conditions that would automatically attach to anything that gets deemed approved. A standard condition on indemnification against any health impacts from third parties. Some additional look at the building code requirements for poles. Back to the ordinance, the ordinance would require undergrounding to the extent possible. And then any other updates that Dr. Kramer has or that the planning department has that would be helpful to the ordinance. So that, so the only thing that would have to come back is if the council wanted to reprioritize or give a timetable for when it should, that ordinance should come back. Maybe Bonnie has some ideas about that.
Okay, Bonnie and then Skylar?
I didn't know if Skylar or Councilmember Peak wanted to comment before I responded or?
Well, I was just going to say that in regards to the timetable, I mean, my concern is, we know that this is getting rolled out. If we take, you know, a year or two years to update stuff, are we just completely behind what's going on here and all this stuff has already been done and none of it's done to the standard that we want it done to? That's sort of what my concern is, and I think the reason for urgency.
Mayor, if I could just jump in for a minute on the timing, I think in terms of, if you could give us a time to go back and discuss our workload. We understand this is a priority and we'll do everything we can to fit it in and put it up at the top of the list. But I don't want to, you know, overpromise something without speaking to staff and looking at everything else that's, you know, on the list right now. So we also have Bonnie who is leaving us in October. So I just want to get a handle on that before we commit to a timeframe, if that's okay.
I think that's smart. And I think too, what I'm hearing is from the public and from our attorneys here is that there are other models we can follow that seem to be successful. That so hopefully that helps. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. But Christie?
So the action item so far is to receive and file this report and to refer back to staff, the ordinance, you know, with the information we got tonight. And ask for them to report back in terms of when the council can reasonably expect the ordinance to return. That's easy. And then the second thing, or the third thing now is just to decide whether you want an item to come back to you to come back with how you want to proceed on the political action part of it. Whether you want to create a subcommittee or a task force, or whether you want just a series of actions that you can direct. So you can just direct us to bring an item back which lists some of those things. And it'll take us a little while because I want to find out a little more about where the lawsuit is and talk a little more about what other groups are lobbying the FCC and how we could be effective. But we could do that, you know, within the next couple of months.
Right. I think that's a great point. And that's what I was thinking because there's obviously a lot of people that are deeply involved here that might be able to offer some direction, obviously. So I think that's well said. Skylar?
Yeah, and I would just suggest that if, Christie, you can talk with Scott, Mr. McCullough about that, who had some good suggestions and whatnot, maybe a little bit more in-depth conversation. Helpful, and I would urge that.
And I would add, Mr. McCullough, if you, I personally would ask if you have written what you were saying and then you did get to finish, I would really appreciate if somehow it showed up in my email box. That would be kind of awesome. So, and sorry that we had to cut you off. It just, you know, that's just the way sometimes it goes. But your words are great. And I'd like to be able to read it all again and read what I didn't get to. Or you didn't get to.
So then, to wrap it up, it might be just simply to receive and file the report, to refer back to staff, the ordinance with direction to provide some information about when the council might expect the ordinance to come forward and to refer to my office the task of coming up with an action plan for the political end of it.
Perfect. And I'll commit to discussing this with our lobbyists at our call this week and just get some feedback there and see where they're at as far as connections, et cetera.
Do we not need to do a vote on this? Are we good with that? Because it's receiving file.
Receive and file.
I think we're good, unless you guys want to. I think we understand the task.
Is everyone, can I at least get a nod ahead? Is everyone in agreement?
So for the record, those of you who are listening and not watching, all of the council members are nodding their head yes that we can go forward with the direction as I've just described it.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And I'm going to call for a recess here briefly so we can head towards the finish. It's 9:27. Try to be back at 9:35. Is that fair? Are we good? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I knew that was going to be a receipt.
Skylar, are you there somewhere? Oh, here he comes. Okay, see the city council back. I don't know if we have Heather back and.
Yep, we're all good.
Okay, is everyone there? I guess our attorney, Kristy, are you there? Bonnie's there.
I'm here.
Okay, just want to make sure we had everyone with us. So we're moving on now to item four A. This is appeal number two zero dash zero zero nine, which is an appeal of planning commission resolution number twenty dash forty six at two nine six two three Cuthbert Road. Can I have a report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'll be presenting to you the appeal filed by the property owner of the planning commissions denial of the project. If you may have the next slide, please. The project's located towards the eastern end of Cuthbert Road at about the end of the Malibu Park neighborhood where it abuts a trail area and state land. Next slide, please. These are photographs of the proposed replacement structure. The homeowner opted to obtain a coastal development permit because they wish to build essentially on the same building pad, but a larger home. The planning verification standards would have allowed for the replacement of the home. And in addition, up to 10%, but this owner chose to replace the home with something a bit larger, increase the rear yard setback, and also try to blend a little more into the geography so that the home follows the contrast of the land and is a bit less visible. Next slide, please. The project is proposed will be a roughly sixty two hundred square foot, single family residence. There is a second unit proposed as part of the project. The residence has a covered patio and the square footage of that patio has been counted into the overall square footage of the project. And there's a swimming pool, some site walls, new wastewater treatment system landscaping and grading. Next slide, please. There are three discretionary requests associated with this project. There are two requests for height above eighteen feet, one for the second unit and one for the house. There's, I mentioned, there was a home there before. The home's being roughly cited in about the same location as I'll show you in a moment. But there was not a second unit, so that is something new. And while we do have a request for a reduction in the rear yard setback, this home actually is going to be set back further than the previous home. However, since it's a new structure, there was a minor modification requested. Next slide, please. This is a site plan showing the proposed development. The applicant proposes to maintain the driveway and the fire department access and the hammerhead turnaround. Next slide, please. So what we have here is an overlay of the old home versus the new home. The old home is what you see in blue. The new home is what you see there in gray. The old home, as shown in these drawings here, is a bit closer to the rear property line. The reason why the new home looks so much further out of the footprint is because it is being scooted more towards the street or the south. But the applicant is retaining the, they're trying to retain the existing driveway and also the fire department turnaround and the graded pad. And I'll explain a bit why that is more important. Next slide, please. The items that were the applicants, the appellant's contention, the applicant as well. The reason why the planning commission found the project not in conformance was that the planning commission made a determination that there was a two thirds issue, a massing issue. The project did not provide the required parkland setback. There was a neighborhood character concern raised. There was a lack of ability to make findings for the minor modification. And then also the appellant argues there was a lack of a fair and impartial hearing. Next slide, please. This is an exhibit showing the two thirds massing of the home. The areas that are hatched are the, the areas that were counted towards the two thirds height and the area that is just a solid color, it was, is below eighteen feet. Now, what I'd like to point out, though, is that the second floor, the second floor and the areas above eighteen feet are all over the first floor footprint. So as you can see by this diagram here, the area that is above eighteen feet or second floor, which there's only one part, that second floor, and that's a little part there of the master bedroom towards the bottom of this slide. It is roughly two thirds, just by looking at this, you can see, and we also have the calculations to verify that they are within their two thirds massing. They're actually about a thousand square feet below what the code allows. Next slide, please. We took a very conservative approach because as you see in this exhibit, this is primarily a single story home. It's only that one portion towards the street where you actually see a two story condition. But what we did is we counted anything that has a height above eighteen feet. Because of the visual impacts and consistency with the code, we counted that to be that area that needs to be within two thirds. While there's a very small portion, that's the second floor, as the previous slide demonstrated. What you can see in this slide is that actually a lot of the areas above eighteen feet are the parapet roofs from the vaulted ceilings on that ground level. So we did count that, as I mentioned, and the architect verified for us, and then we checked their numbers that this is within two thirds. Next slide, please. Another item that the planning commission felt that was required was a variance because this project did not provide in the planning commission's determination the required one hundred foot setback from the parkland that's located to the north, directly adjacent to the property. As you can see in these diagrams here, we have, we've identified the area of the trail and those relation to the proposed project. And on the diagram on the right hand side of your screen, you can see the purple area, which is a one hundred foot buffer. Staff does not disagree that the parkland setback section of the code applies to the project. It does. However, that section of the code states that a variance is required to protect us, and this wording is in the staff report that was provided to you. The parkland variance, the hundred foot buffer shall be provided when necessary to protect impact to sensitive habitat area or parkland resources. As you can see in the drawing on the right hand side, the trail and the Esha area, which is the area in brown, are both outside of that one hundred foot setback. And in addition, this new project is actually going to be set further towards the street. So while there is a minor mod, it's actually increasing the previous setback. Staff did confirm, as well as the applicant, we did correspond with the National Park Service. They're the ones who administer that area and the protection policies for it. And they did confirm as well that would coincide with our Esha maps that the resources are in excess of one hundred feet. So staff believes that the project does actually meet the standards of the LCP in that it is providing for parkland protection because it is not impacting those resources. Next slide, please. Another issue that was brought up was neighborhood character. And in this slide here, the color coding that's on the picture matches up to the color coding in the table there with square footages. But the important takeaway from this is that the homes that are to the north of Harbor, of Harvester, or excuse me, Cuthbert, the homes to the north of Cuthbert Road are larger homes. There's homes there with square footages upwards of nine thousand square feet. And to the south of Cuthbert Road, there are some smaller properties which do have smaller homes, homes that are within the four to five thousand square foot range. And then along Bush Drive there, along that eastern end of Bush, there, those lots are even smaller and therefore have smaller homes. The subject home is, as I mentioned, six thousand square feet, roughly sixty two hundred square feet. The proposed square footage for the entire project is around seventy seven hundred square feet. However, that's nine hundred square feet for the second unit. And also, as I mentioned, there's a covered deck, which I'll show you. And staff counted that area as well as part of the TDSF for this property. So that is why it brings up the number about fifteen hundred square feet higher. Once again, it's being consistent with the code and conservative. However, size wise, this is not the largest home in this end of Cuthbert Road. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of the square footages. May I have the next slide, please? The planning commission also stated that the findings for the requested modification to the rear yard setback could not be made. The purpose of the aerial photo that you have is to demonstrate to you that in terms of consistency with the surrounding properties, the homes all are in line with each other, these three homes. And it's common to see homes towards the back of the property there. If the home was moved more forward, it could have the possibility of impacting views to neighboring properties. In addition, as I mentioned, the applicant was their intention to maintain use of the existing path from the development of the previous home. The section there on the lower portion of the slide demonstrates the flat area where the home is going to be cited. This minimizes disturbance. Yes, the home could be moved more forward. However, moving the home more towards the street would place it directly on that slope that is visible in this section of the property. It also would require the fire department turnaround and driveway to be realigned and additional grading. So while yes, it is feasible, it would result in greater site disturbance. And as previously mentioned, this home actually will also be set back a little bit further by about ten to twelve feet more than the previous development. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the proposed project, and you could see the covered deck area that is proposed that was counted towards the square footage. And above the pool there to the right is the only second floor portion of the property. It is primarily a single floor. And to the further right in the foreground of the photo there is the two story second unit, which also does comply with the two thirds requirement. The appellant's contention that there was a lack of a fair and impartial hearing, staff was not able to find any evidence that there was such an issue. The meeting was conducted consistent with all of the city's policies and applicable codes. The applicant was granted their fifteen minutes to speak. They had some rebuttal time left. And in addition, prior to the final decision being made on the project, the planning commission chair did also afford them the opportunity to speak again. So staff is unable to find that there was a lack of a fair and impartial hearing. Next slide, please. I believe the next slide is going to just essentially be the wrap up of this, which is the summary that staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty forty eight to grant the appeal and approve the coastal development permit and its associated requests. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to go into greater detail. The applicant and the project team is also online this evening with us and available to ask questions and wishes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. First, let's do disclosures. Karen, do you have any disclosures?
Sorry, there, am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Yes, I responded to an email from the applicant slash appellant and went to the site, did a site review with them, I think, I think it was a week ago today. So I visited the site with the property owner.
Did you learn anything new that wasn't in the report?
No, I did not.
Thank you. Jefferson, any disclosures? Oh, you're muted, you're muted. There you go.
I visited the property on my own, took some photos with my camera and walked up one side, saw the driveway, did observations, the usual stuff. Called a windshield drive by, but I got out and observed. Also, I had one phone call from a neighbor supporting the project, Tony Dorn. Other than that, I have learned nothing that isn't already been presented. The appellant did reach out to me with an email to have a visit at the property. I just couldn't coordinate it with him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Skylar, any disclosures?
The applicant up there a couple of weeks ago. I would say that what I did learn that I entirely included in here is just the, I guess, when you view the property and the perception of the top of specifically where the, I guess it would be maybe disturbed Esha or the area that the National Park kind of trims back for apply some fire protection at the bottom of the Zuma Trailhead or Bush Trailhead, and I'm not sure exactly what it's called, but Bush Trails and the Trail, same thing. It's very evident that that, that it meets that hundred foot, you know, marker. I mean, I wasn't out there with a measuring tape, but it seemed to be hundred feet or maybe significantly greater than a hundred feet of distance where the site of the, the structure would be to the, to the rear area of where this, the park is. So and then also just in terms of the view, to me, it made, when you're, when you're at the project, makes much more sense for the site to be situated on the property where it is to allow for the neighbor whose home is burnt down but not rebuilt for them to have a view, both sort of, I guess, straight out towards, which would probably be the south or southwest and to the west. If the home was pushed out further towards Cuthbert, that would limit that view. So that's what I learned.
Okay, thank you very much. And my disclosure is I did watch and listen to the, that planning commission meeting. And I did meet with the applicant at the property, which I didn't learn anything there, but the neighbor came over, the, the couple and talked about moving it with the impact on their view, what that would be, and that was, that was actually very helpful, more than I could get out of the staff report, to be honest. And and actually, I'll disclose it, what, what, there was apparent to me what, what Skylar just said about the hundred foot area, but I probably wouldn't have thought of it in that way, but then he put it in context. So I'll disclose that too. Yes, that was interesting to see that. And I think that's it. Okay, so do we have some speakers on this item, Heather?
Yeah, we have the applicant team for fifteen minutes, and then we can hear from public comment. So with the applicant team is Mark Bout, Daniella Reitz, Satch, and Trevor Colby. So we'll start with Mark.
Okay, hey, applicant team, so you have fifteen minutes. Do you, do you want to save any for rebuttal? What would you like to do?
Hi, this is Mark Bowdy. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mark. Do you want us to let you know at a certain point to save time or not?
No, we, we, we think we can just reserve one minute for rebuttal. And I think I'd like Trevor Colby to go first. Trevor and Linda lost two homes in the Woolsey Fire, and they've done everything right here. Nineteen of twenty homes in the neighborhood were destroyed, so there is no neighborhood character. Trevor has some very specific things he wants to say, then Daniella second, I'll go third. Shouldn't take more than nine minutes.
Okay, with that, I think Trevor, your first is, if I got that right?
You know, I'd like to thank you, we'd like to thank you all for your time this evening and for you were able to come out and see our, you know, project or our home, hopefully. You know, two times the planning commission voted three to two against our home and the staff's recommendation for approval. You know, we still believe they made, you know, multiple errors in doing so against the staff's recommendation. I think Richard actually did a really good job this evening, you know, sort of talking about that. You know, item number one, which was the two thirds rule, you know, the staff report shows that we comply. Our architect, you know, has provided multiple examples that no matter how you calculate the rule, we comply. No one from the staff or the planning commission has ever showed us how we don't comply. And the rules really can't be twisted, I think, as the commission did. If we don't comply, you know, the staff should have said something. This, this, the planning commission should have provided us some, some sort of documentation. Nobody's ever provided us anything in black and white showing we don't comply with the two thirds rule. So to be, because we comply, so that's what's sort of very frustrating point. I think for all of us, and one of the reasons we're on the third Zoom meeting on this. The Esha and the hundred foot setback, you know, per the staff report. And by the way, in the staff report is the Malibu City biologist says we're not within a hundred feet of Anasha. All of that was known at the planning commission meetings. Since then, we got letters from the National Park Service saying that there's a hundred and fifty foot buffer from our property line, which, you know, Skylar pointed out, and you pointed out as well. Also, our house was built in nineteen, which was before the National Park Service bought the land. So really, our house is basically on the same footprint for the last, what, seventy five, for sixty five years? So it hasn't gone anywhere. And that's also why we have a hundred and fifty foot fuel modification from the National Park Services to protect us from, you know, the parkland burning. You touched on, you know, our neighbor John Goodwin, who did provide you with the letter. And back in two thousand and thirteen, John filed for a view of view corridor with the city. And so if the house were to be moved, it would violate his view corridor. I think this one's, you know, is very important, the whole neighborhood character thing, not to take too much time on it, but you know, like Mark said, nineteen of twenty homes are burned. The character of the neighborhood is going to be new. Our home was built in this location to protect the environment and our neighbors. And this point, I think, is really important. Our story polls have been up since January twelfth. Not one hiker or neighbor has complained in the two hundred and fifty days the polls have been up. This period of time should be taken as a vote in favor by the neighborhood on the character of our, of our home. In addition, we had over twenty five letters of support and numerous speakers who have sat through and later tonight, multi hour Zoom meetings to support us and our house. You know, I'll just sort of end it there. But it seems like everything should start hopefully to work a little smoother. But I don't think the commission should be allowed to, you know, not provide something in black and white on why you don't comply and just be able to say you don't and drag your project out for a year or two and waste the city time. That's just my quick thought on that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Trevor.
Daniella?
Hi, good evening. My name is, good evening, council members. My name is Daniella Rexide, and I'm the architect for the Colby project. On the slide that you see, we have taken the time to calculate the two third rule besides the TDSF, as Richard explained. A calculated also taking into consideration only the square footage of the main floor of the residence, which consists of the four thousand eight hundred and eighty eight square feet for the single family residence plus the attached garage for another six hundred and seventy eight square feet, basically for a total of five thousand five hundred and sixty six square feet. Two thirds of that will be three thousand seven hundred and ten square feet, which is less. I'm sorry, and the total area about over the eighteen feet for the main residence is only three thousand three hundred and fifty six square feet, like Richard stated. So basically, in both instances, taking the tedious effort using our main floor square footage area, the project complies with the two third rule. Next slide, please. This is a map taken from the city website. The red areas are the Esha and the green is the property in question. And on the left hand side, you can see that the rear north property line of, of the site in question is more than a hundred square, a hundred feet from the Esha parkland. Next slide, please. We have reached out to the National Park Services and Mr. Seminski, the superintendent of the Santa Monica Mountains National Park Services, and does a letter stating that the National Park Services maintains several fuel modifications on some public lands adjacent to the development that existed prior to the National Park Service ownership. And one of those field modification maps is the area that you see on, on the slide. Next, please. Regarding appeal item number two, the neighborhood character, as you can see on this map, nineteen out of the twenty developed properties within a five hundred foot radius were. Nineteen out of the twenty developed properties within a five hundred foot radius were destroyed in the Woolly Fire. And our project has been reviewed by the city planners for the ACDP, then for the CDP and and lately for the appeal. And all all the reports, they have concluded that the proposed project complies with the Malibu municipal code and the local coastal plan. I also would like to mention that the commission recently approved another fire rebuilt home on Cuthbert that included a site plan review for a height over eighteen feet. In a similar square for a square footage for the main residence for five thousand nine hundred and thirty two square feet. Next, please. Appeal item, item three, the minor modification to reduce the rear, your setback cannot be made. As Richard stated, the previous structure destroyed by the fire had an unconforming setback of twenty one. Feet and we're proposing thirty three feet and forty inches in lieu of the thirty eight feet and forty inches required. So basically for a minor modification of thirteen, a thirteen percent reduction of the rear setback. We have looked into alternatives, but locations, but locating the proposed structure and improvements within the existing paths and previously disturbed areas. And reusing the existing access to the site minimizes the site disturbance and avoids additional grading. Especially due to the fire requirement and. Fire for due to improvements from the fire department, like widening the driveway. To twenty feet and providing a T turn on top ne- next to the property. Also, like Trevor mentioned. Moving the proposed development to the center of the property could result in view impacts for the neighbor for the neighbors. Like the view corridor determination that our neighbor to the right has. And which was included on the supplemental council agenda. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Mark Bowdy. I just have a few comments. As you can see, on the four. Legal errors, math errors committed by the planning commission. That process was upsetting to the applicant, but what's more troubling is. It's apparent that there's three members of the planning commission that appear to be pursuing some sort of personal vision. As opposed to the actual compliance with the code. So they simply ignore math. When somebody shows them math that says we're in plot two thirds rule and your planning department says we are, they ignore it. When somebody says, here's a map, not we're not within a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet of a fuel modification zone, they just ignore it. When we say our next neighbor does not want the house relocated. So thank you very much for your personal opinion on where the house should be located. But everybody in this neighbor wants this house located exactly where they put it. For six different reasons. So we all know what this three person group on the. Planning commission is doing, packing it and show. We are not, this neighborhood was traumatized. The neighborhood needs to be rebuilt. The money and the jobs that flow from building a beautiful home need to happen. We would very much like a four O vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you done? Are you saving the rest of your time right now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Heather, do we have other speakers?
Yeah, we do. I would read them in order, and then we'll start at the top. Stuart Smith, Brendan McBreen, Tony Dorn, Melanie J. Maguire. Michael James Maguire, Tammy Malmo, Anna Marie Griffin, Mary Beth Massett. And Dana Grellet. So Stuart Smith.
Yeah, I can hear you, Stuart.
Right. Hi, my name is Stuart Smith. Thank you to the city council and all the hard work that you put forth. I just want to say that our family is in total support of the Colby family and their rebuild. And I'm going to speak to the emotional aspects of what they may be experiencing. Similar to Colby's, we have been longtime residents, well over twenty plus years, and also lost our home in the Woolsey fire. After the two thousand and seven Corral Canyon fires, I became a qualified firefighter along with nine other awesome volunteers here in Malibu. Because we didn't want what happened to fifty three homes then to happen to anyone else in Malibu community. It's hard enough trying to build a new home without experiencing a devastating loss. And trying to build here in Malibu is like nothing I've ever experienced in my life. I think people lose sight of what's really important here. The city council commissioners and planning commission members all need to have some compassion and empathy. When they're deciding people's fates and who have experienced the type of trauma and gone through this emotional hell. Since the fires happened in two thousand and eighteen, I've joked with a neighbor in Corral Canyon. That we both thought, we both thought to ourselves as we're driving down the steep parts of Corral. This would be a great place to drive off and not have to deal with this crap we're going through. He and I would never do that. But those are deep thoughts that run through people's minds who have gone through disaster and have to try and recover from everything they've lost. Everyone should review the warning signs and risk factors for emotional distress impacted by disasters. So they can assist others in need. None of us should have to go through the things the Colby's are going through. To deny longtime residents who have been very generous, community members is simply unbelievable to me. And then you're. Very truthful to your, if you're really truthful to yourselves, you'd feel the same way. You should be looking at ways to work with the Colby's on how to get their house permitted and built, along with all of the other Malibu residents who are struggling to make this happen. My wife and I just received our permit three weeks ago. It's been an emotional and mental nightmare, and I can't imagine how Trevor, Linda, and the rest of the Colby family feels. I would absolutely be livid if our plans were being approved and then somehow later denied. It's important that we bring our local families like the Colby's back into our community. And I encourage and challenge the committee to do what's right and approve their plans so the Colby's can move forward and start to heal. Thank you for the opportunity to talk in support of the Colby family.
Thank you, Stuart.
Next is Brendan McBreen.
I'm calling in in support of Trevor and Linda Colby and the fire rebuild of their Cuthbert home. We've known the Colby's over twenty years. We were neighbors on Point Doom, and our children all went to the local schools together. We have seen their plans and renderings and feel they are building a beautiful home appropriate to the Malibu Park neighborhood. As a fifty seven year long Malibu resident, I appreciate the more rural aspects of the community. The Colby's are fortunately inheriting really amazing, beautiful, mature cactus that mass the front of their property and the back, which borders the Bush Trail. It's got to be at least forty years old and came through the fire relatively unscathed. The home they are proposing is beautifully sided, tucked into the hillside, and complements all the native cactus surrounding it. It's so great to see that the Colby's are sensitive to the site and the more rural, original aspects of the neighborhood. We look forward to your support of this project, enabling this longtime Malibu family to build their new home. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Brendan.
Next is Tony Dorn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Tony.
Thank you. I'm trying to edit my own letter because I know times are the essence. Dear Honorable City Council. My wife and I are speaking in support of the Cuthbert home that is being proposed by our dear friends Linda and Trevor Colby and their family. Who are longtime Malibu residents are seeking approval for their single family residence. The Colby suffered not one home lost in the Woolsey fire, but two. They've risen to the incredibly difficult challenge of rebuilding and have designed their dream home on this really large acreage lot of, I think, over sixty three thousand feet. Malibu Park has suffered through so much, but many of us long term Malibu residents recognize that the neighborhood. Is in the process of rebuilding and healing, and in a few years will resemble a better planned and well designed neighborhood with safer homes. We are Malibu Park residents, and our daily walk through the neighborhood reveals many homes much larger than the proposed Colby residence. And with all the future rebuilding occurring, the neighborhood standard will be substantially larger than before. When asked in the previous meeting if it would cause hardship, if there were a delay, the answer most certainly was yes. This local family has maintained an extremely positive attitude in spite of tremendous hardships of losing everything. And having to relocate multiple times for the last year and a half. We've just recently completed our first new ground up home on Point Doom in Malibu. And I've been building a long time commercially, and I'll just say that this was one of the most complicated, difficult and expensive, time consuming things that we've ever done. The rules are complicated and certainly conflicting, but add in dealing with insurance adjusters, lenders, a pandemic. And a really unfair planning commission decision, and it's put an extreme burden on this family. The Cuthbert home's a beautiful design and substantial thought was given to the terrain, which is a few of the reasons why we want to vocally support the Colby's. We encourage you to get this new home on track as soon as possible and simplify any of the rebuild processes you can to allow them to commence construction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony.
Is Melanie Maguire.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Melanie.
Oh, great. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Linda and Trevor Colby. We've known them since our kids were in kindergarten, which is now twenty years ago. And Linda and I were co leaders, along with Maria Daly for Brownies, Girl Scout troops. And involved in the PTA. And they've been great friends for years. And their plan, I feel just really, they're going through very conscious choices. To build a eco friendly home that will be safer, and their design shows how much they value Malibu's. Natural beauty, especially with the architecture and organic landscape. And I just want to say that I strongly recommend to the committee. To support the approval of this home so the Colby's can move forward. And bring our local friends back, back to our community. Please approve the plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melanie.
Next is Dr. Michael Maguire.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Michael.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the, to the city council for your service and all that you do. And I just wanted to say, as far as the the Colby's. As my wife Melanie said, we've known them for over twenty years and they're just. Besides being great friends, they're solid members of the community and. Always been very generous in in giving and kind of people that you can count on when you need help. You know, when I listen to. The different details about the the plans, you know, I learned a little bit more this evening and some of the things that. That I was happy to see is that the setback. For the Esha parklands is exceeds a hundred feet. So that, you know, they check that box and the two thirds rule. You know, that they, their, that plan complies. Their plans comply with that, and it meets the view corridor requirement. And also, it's built to be more safe and eco friendly. I thought it was noteworthy that Trevor said the story polls have been up for two hundred and fifty days and, you know, no complaints. And that it's built to really have minimal site disturbance. And it seems that the people that live around them are really for it. The way that the plans are drawn up and are supportive of that. And I'd just like to say, let's do the right thing for these good neighbors and good members of of the Malibu community. They're long term Malibu residents, like so many people have gone through the fire, so many families that we all know and love. They've, you know, they've really been through a tough time. And a lot of trauma, and it's time to help Malibu heal. And it's been an ongoing process. Obviously, the healing has started. And I just say. You know, this place really seems to line up in all the the right ways. And I just can't imagine any reason why it wouldn't be approved. So let's just do the right thing. Let's help Malibu continue to heal. And bring. Our good residents like the Colby's and so many others back. So thank you to the Malibu City Council for your consideration with this. And for approval of the Colby's Cuthbert residents. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Michael.
I don't see the next speaker in the meeting, Tammy Malmo. So we'll move on to Anna Marie Griffin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Anna Marie.
Hi, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the Colby's. I want to reiterate what I wrote in my letter to the planning commission in May. I support Linda and Trevor as we go through this difficult process of rebuilding our homes in Malibu Park. My husband and I agree that the Colby's eco friendly, fire resistant home. Will be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. We empathize with Linda and Trevor. When we lost our home in the Woolsey fire, we never imagined. We would be looking at an empty lot nearly two years later. And contrary to what Mr. Pearson said at the top of the meeting about families being stuck in insurance limbo. I would respectfully disagree that many of us are stuck in planning limbo. A hundred and thirty seven building permits issued this in a year and nine months after the fire. When more than four hundred Malibu homes were lost is not promising. I'm rebuilding a home identical to the one we lost. And I still don't have my building permits. So I understand the Colby's frustration very well. I think they're receiving conflicting information between the planning department and the commission. And I hope that tonight's meeting comes to a resolution. And thanks for letting me speak, but I just wanted to also just underscore that. This, you know, delay in granting permits, it's a, it's a. Loss of revenue to the community, but it's a serious financial impact on the fire victims. And that's all. So thank you.
Thank you, Anna Marie.
Next is Mary Beth Massett.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, thank you so much for. Letting me speak on behalf of Linda and Trevor, and thank you to the council for all your hard work and. For staying up late. My, my husband and myself, we have lived in Malibu for twenty five years. We've been in Malibu Park. For thirteen, we live over on Harvester. We lost our house. And we've known the the Colby's for a really long time, and they're such wonderful people. And so it. It makes me happy to be able to speak on their behalf. We've looked at the proposed plan for their new home on Cuthbert, and it looks really integrated and beautiful. The design looks like it's very sensitive to the the natural landscape. And it blends into the topography, you know, and the sloping hillside. You know, I just, I I want to say, you know, I really want to reiterate how beautiful it is because. There are many places that are, you know, ten thousand square feet plus that aren't beautiful. That have been approved and that are in Malibu. And so I just, I I just really have to scratch my head as to why. This is having a hard time. So with that said. They're really, really wonderful people. They're great community members. And they are building a home that's in tune with our community. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for considering their plan. It's, you know, it's so important that. We are able to rebuild and revive our community. We're all like so homesick to get back to Malibu Park. We got our, we got our permit. We're underway. I'm so grateful for that, for the city, for to help it, for helping us and everything, but. Man, I'm just so homesick, and I can imagine how the Colby's must feel. So let us all like band together and get us all home. We feel really confident that the Colby's plan will be a magnificent asset to Malibu Park. So thank you.
Thank you.
And last is Dana Grellet.
Dana, are you there? I'm there, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, yeah, we can hear you, Dana.
Sorry, pushed the wrong button. Good evening, City Council, good evening, and thank you, Richard and Bonnie and Riva and Yolanda for all of the help that you've given us during these, this rebuild process and advocating for these projects. I want to speak out in support and echo the feelings of the other callers tonight of the Colbies rebuild at two-nine-six-two-three Cuthbert Road. My husband and I own a property at three-zero-one-three-zero Cuthbert and we too are homesick and we want to get back to our neighborhood. And I didn't know the Colbies until recently. As you know, Malibu Park is a neighborhood made up of larger-sized lots and despite living in the neighborhood for the last fifteen years, we didn't know many of our neighbors unless they were clients of our hospital. After the fire destroyed Malibu Park, we've been searching for silver linings and getting to connect with our neighbors through this experience has been one of them. The Colbies Administrative CDP came before the Planning Commission just after our project did. We experienced so much stress and anguish going through that process, having our own ACDP voted down, experiencing further delays in costs and having to return for a full CDP. When I heard that another neighborhood was going through the same process, I spoke out in support. Shortly thereafter, Linda reached out to me and we've established a lovely connection. The Colbies have designed a beautiful home that blends well with its surroundings and the hillside and what the future of Malibu Park will look like with a move toward more fire-friendly architecture. Their adjacent neighbors are in support of the project, as are every other caller this evening. And with zero complaints, me being the last speaker tonight, I think it speaks volumes. The arguments belabored at the Planning Commission hearings about proximity to the fire road are unfair and just an excuse to shoot down another member of our community trying to rebuild and heal after this horrible experience. I don't fault the Planning Commission for all of these hassles, as I do believe the commissioners are trying to follow the rules in place. However, I implore the City Council to take action to clarify or remove the language about neighborhood character, because when left to interpretation, it sets the prospective homeowners, architects, and Planning Department up for failure. It's also an insanely expensive process for everyone, especially those of us rebuilding after the fire. A short-term solution may be to make special considerations for owner-fire rebuilds outside of the original plus-ten percent rule, but I'm, I'm not sure what the answer is. What I do know is that now, twenty-one months after losing their home, the Colbies should be granted the opportunity to move forward in this process and begin to rebuild their lives and reclaim their location in Malibu Park. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dana.
That concludes public comment and the applicant, applicant has five minutes left.
Okay, Mark, do you want to take some of your time? Or Trevor?
Let's see, Mark. We're good, thank you very much.
Okay, Trevor, Mark, you, I see you just unmuted.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I, I'll just say a couple of things. I appreciate the City Council taking time out, volunteer job, very difficult. Appreciate all the speakers showing up. This applicant doesn't need any special treatment. They've complied with every rule and every aspect and your professional planning department, which we also think approves of this house being built. What you have going on in your Planning Commission with three particular members, they are not acting in good faith. They are not respectful of the rules or how the process is supposed to work. This project needs to be approved. We would like four votes, not three, we would like four, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I think we're done with public speakers, we're back here at the council. Comments? Karen?
Yeah, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, um, I read the staff report. I read all comments, I, as I said, visited the site, I looked at every diagram, every picture. So that, that to me is very clear. I would like to, number one, thank the speakers and go through some of their comments, just to reiterate. As Stuart Smith, and, and I will start by saying, many of those who spoke tonight are not only friends and, and community members of the Colbies and, and many of us. We've all, some of us have known each other for a long time. Many of these people also lost their homes. Stuart Smith, do not ignore the emotional impact on fire survivors, talking about the thought of just driving off Corral Canyon is deeply concerning to me and Stuart, I'm sorry to know that you felt that way and I hope that feeling is going away now that you've got your permit. Brendan McBreen, who's lived here almost sixty years. You know what, I also meant, noticed the cactus down at the street and in the back. I have similar cactus on my property. And that was the first thing we said when we looked at this lot here that I live on, we got to keep the cactus. Because you can't just plant that and, and have it magically appear, it's decades old. And that is preserving the rural, original aspect of that neighborhood. Tony Dorn also lost a property. Speaker after speaker mentioned that this rebuild is not only a beautiful aesthetic, but it's safer than what was there before. And it's an eco-friendly, fire-s safer home. I don't know what could be wrong with that. Yeah, this delay is causing hardship, story polls have been up for two-hundred-and-fifty days, not one complaint. An email from the neighbor, I think it's, it's the neighbor with the view preservation, the good ones. What more could we ask for? And, and the suggestion of moving this home closer to the street would encroach on that view preservation. And the fact that this home is farther away from the trail in the back, which many of us have walked up many, many, many times, speaks for itself. Inga and Jeff Morell, who didn't speak tonight, also emailed me, same thing, in support. The Maguires. It's not lost on me and I hope to anyone, it's said again and again, the Colbies are active, involved members of this community. The, the, the idea that, that the council, you know, we voted deliberately and specifically to try to support fire rebuilds, support our community members, help them rebuild, help them with streamlining. We hired additional planners, helped them by waiving permit fees in like-for-like or like-for-like plus-ten percent situations. And then to see this happening is, it's painful to watch. I can't imagine what it's like to be the subject of this. Again and again, we heard from speakers tonight, bring local community members back. People want to be back in their homes. We're coming up to the two-year mark here. The, the, the loss of revenue to the city and a huge financial burden to residents. I'd be afraid to even ask what the, what the additional financial cost is with this delay. But what we have is, is a design here that is quote, "integrated and beautiful to the environment, sensitive to the natural landscape, blends into the topography" and, and quote, "a magnificent aspect to Malibu Park." Dana Growlett, zero complaints. I don't understand why we're even talking about this tonight. So those are my comments, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Karen, Jefferson?
Thank you, Mikey. Mike, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, I can hear you, yes, yes.
Thank you. Upon visiting the site and driving all the way down Cuthbert, doing the neighborhood review, the, it appears that the neighborhood projects will probably be on the larger size, there's probably going to be a few more with CDP applications, some like-for-like plus-ten percent. But as was mentioned by a number of the speakers, the neighborhood's going to change and that's what's happened to Malibu during the Woolsey event and the aftermath is we're going to have to absorb that change and I'm willing to absorb change as long as it's done tastefully like it appears this project is. I was impressed with the prickly pears out front, that's that cactus that everybody's mentioning, it's actually called prickly pear. And you can harvest that if you do it carefully and it's a terrific jam-making pear. Moving on. So I have no problem with the project. I thought it would, what I've looked at and what I've seen, looked tasteful, looked like it would fit within the neighborhood. So I don't have any issue with that. The only issue I'm going to mention right now is that a number of the speakers, not all of them, but a couple of them picked on the Planning Commission. And that's their right and they're welcome to do that and for me, it's disappointing to hear that kind of language because I don't use that language myself and I don't take that tact when I'm making decisions, because I'm in favor of this project. I would just say to the speakers that spoke about the Planning Commission, they do the homework for us, we're supposed to rely on them. If you feel that they've done something in error, you mention it politely in error. But don't pick on them, because there are appointees, they're here to do a job and they do the details that we don't have the time to do. So I'm in favor of the project, I'm going to vote in favor of the project, but I ask these people to remember the tact that they should take, thank you, Mikey.
Thank you, Jefferson, Skylar?
Thank you, Mikey, I was, I'm just gonna, it's late, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, I'll wait for a second before I make my comments. Karen, you're in second. Which so noted with a hand raise. I, I think everyone spoke, I, I would echo pretty much all of what I just heard. I would add too, that from my Planning Commission background, I go through each item individually and I can make every single finding that this house is fine. I think the tur, two-thirds rule one was the most interesting, in a sense. If we did not measure TDSF with covered porches that went out more than six feet, people could build these massive homes that were a house with a massive covered deck, which would be very odd and I think is against what we're after, so I think we have to count that TDSF. So we can't have it both ways. If you're measuring the TDSF one way, it, it impacts the two-thirds rule. So I, I think that was kind of important. The National Park setback was easy with their letter, I mean, that was, that just, I just did that one. The minor mod, more than easy to make, we make minor mods all the time that are far in excess of this, because the location of the home is well-established. A neighborhood character, no complaints, tons of support, so that's my view, we have a motion and a second, can I get roll call on this, please?
Airways and Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And we are now moving to 4B. 4B, amend the Malibu Municipal, Municipal Code to authorize the implementation of a parking management plan along two segments of the Pacific Coast Highway, which are Corral Beach and Zuma Beach. Can I have a staff report, please?
Sure, good evening again, everybody. This is going to sound familiar because we have prepared a similar ordinances or a similar ordinance for your consideration several months ago to deal with the Las Tunas area and the Malibu Pier area. This is to try to control overnight parking that leads to an abuse of the parking spaces, monopolization of parking spaces and camping, which is not an appropriate or allowed use in the public right-of-way. So the two areas that we're talking about tonight are on, in the Corral Beach area and in the Zuma Beach area. You might remember from the prior ordinance that we processed that the whole scheme is set up around making sure that there's always public parking available to serve the public resources in these areas so that there's a two-hour parking prohibition on one side of the street while the parking is allowed on the other and then it switches, so between twelve and two AM and between two and four AM is how it works. The one new twist in this particular ordinance is in the Zuma area where, as you know, the Zuma Beach is really long, it's nearly two miles long and there's parking prohibited on the landward side already. So the way this staggered parking restriction is set up is that the area was designed to be broken in half so that there's an east half, east half and a west half that they will switch at, at the twelve and two and two and four AM intervals. Like the prior ordinance, in order to post the signs and put the parking restrictions into effect, coastal development permits will need to be processed for both of these areas. We have noticed, as a result of processing the CDP in the Las Tunas area and installing the signs, that there seems to be a reduction in the overnight storage or camping that occurs in vehicles and oversized vehicles and, and the problems that go along with all of that stuff that we're trying to address here. Rob Duboe has also collaborated with planning on this. And Rob, if there's anything you want to add or council, if there's anything you would like to ask either of us, we're available for any questions, I think I will leave it there at this point and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. I don't see Rob, Rob, did you have anything to add or Riva, I see you've popped up on the screen, do you have anything to add? No?
I don't, I just have a few questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
We have public comment, do you want to take that now?
Yes, of course, of course, I just thought maybe those other comments on the staff report first. Let's, let's listen to the speakers.
Okay, um, read them in order, Jerry Churchill, Bruce Silverstein, Doug Stewart, Joel Schulman, Andy Lyon, and Paul Gressanti.
Great.
Jerry Churchill?
Perfect. Jerry, I see you're still muted. Oh, hi, Jerry.
Hi. Sorry.
Nope, thanks for staying up late.
That's okay, thank you for having me. We're talking about Corral Canyon, right?
Corral and Zuma.
Okay, well, let me tell you, I've been a Corral Beach resident, Corral Canyon resident for seventeen years and I have a little game I play when I go to work at five, six, seven in the morning and that is, I count the campers along Corral Beach when I go into the, to work in the morning and that is I count the campers along Corral Beach when I go into the, to work in the morning and often time it's not, it's not uncommon, and I've been doing this for a few years, to have 30 or 40 campers there parked on the beach at, you know, five, six o'clock in the morning when I go to work. You know, there's, there's debris, there's just trash. Obviously people are dumping their, uh, septic there from their, from their, um, campers. And you know, I'm talking about this not, not just in regards, um, to wanting to open this, open the beaches up to Malibu residents. I'm talking about people who, if you live over the hill, if you live in the valley and you wake up on a, on a weekend morning and you'd like to bring your family to the beach, you should be able to come over to the beach and park and enjoy the beach with your family. Uh, I read, I read everything you had, um, listed and thank you all very much because I know a lot of thought went into this. I was, I was quite concerned. I, I mean, I, I, I am glad, you know, about the, making the parking two hours on one side. No parking, two hours on one side and no parking, two hours on the other side. I was very concerned on page three where it said, um, that the available turnaround areas would include Corral Canyon Road and Puerto Canyon Road. You know, a lot of these motorhomes that are parked there, these are, you know, 100,000, 200,000, $300,000, you know, 32, 35, close to 40 feet. Huge motorhomes with the, with the pullout sliders on both sides. Uh, I'm just trying to picture this scene where there's a two hour window where all of these are turning around on Corral Canyon. Uh, I don't even know how you turn a, a home of that size around. I also want to say from a safety standpoint, one thing that's very dangerous is these, these homes with the big slide outs, these, these motorhomes, these are not homeless. These are, you know, these are a few hundred thousand dollar homes. And, um, they're expanded so that you can't even walk past them. You're, you're forced to walk out onto the highway just to get around these cars. So, I mean, around these motorhomes. Anyway, thank you all very much. Thank you for staying up. I, I'm so appreciative of all of you and all of your work and thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next is Bruce Silverstein.
Good evening again, everybody. First of all, it's like to say, um, you know, when we, when public speak, not only do we not get to be seen, that's, that's okay, but the council members all go away too. Like your smiling faces disappear and all we get is a piece of paper to look at. It would be great if we could still have the screen where we could see people. In any event, I, I think this is great. I, I think it's very inventive. I hope it's successful. I don't, I don't know whether it will be, but I hope it's successful. I do know that if, if there's any chance of this being successful, it's going to require enforcement, obviously, because just to post signs if we ever get them and if coastal permits them, the signs themselves won't do anything without enforcement. And, um, when speaking about enforcement, I don't understand why efforts, better efforts aren't being made to enforce other laws that clearly do pertain to these RVs that are other than parking laws, because I, I get the parking law issue is, is one that's you're grappling with. But everyone knows of the waste issues and I don't understand why the waste is not being documented formally by the city or even by people that are commissioned to do that by the city and have fines and if necessary, and hopefully towing to deal with that. The other thing I'd like to ask about is, um, I know that previously this, I, this was part of, um, a larger proposal, or as I believe it was, which included an overnight lot at Zuma, which was the subject of substantial community negative reaction. And it was pulled. Even the, the discussion of it was pulled. It's not in this proposal, which I'm glad to see, but I wonder whether there's some connection between this and bringing that back. And I would like to hear council, um, commit that that is not a part of this. This is a solely independent project and that there's no expectation that in order to get this from coastal, we're going to have to trade to get the other item, to give up the other item or anything like that, that this is simply a, a parking proposal. It stands alone. And if it, if it goes to effect, great, but it's not going to involve some larger homeless endeavor that we don't know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Next is Doug Stewart.
Good evening, council members.
Hey Bruce. Doug, I mean Doug, I'm sorry.
Hi there. Good evening. Uh, I'm speaking tonight in favor of this item, both as a private citizen as well as the vice chair of the Public Safety Commission. Last year, the Public Safety Commission had this issue of overnight and extended days of parking for RVs and other issues along public beaches on our agenda several times. This was an issue that was brought to our attention by many members of the public as well as commissioners' own concerns regarding both public safety and environmental issues. After the county was successful in implementing their plan for their similar problem on their portion of PCH, we passed a request to the Public Works Department to develop a plan for ultimate submission to the council for Las Tunas, the Pier area, Corral and Zuma. You were viewing the segment for Corral and Zuma this evening. The public safety factors are many. Among these is the homesteading vehicles precluding the daily visitors from parking on the ocean side of Corral Beach especially. This forces most of the daily visitors, visitors to have to run across PCH and heavy traffic as their only available parking is on the land side. Along Zuma, it causes less daily visitor parking as homesteaders are taking the ocean side, forcing the daily visitors who cannot afford or access Zuma to find parking where they can on the land side and then crossing busy PCH just as they do at Corral. We're fortunate that we've not had a loss of life or serious injury from either of these incidents, either of these locations. Then you have to consider the especially large RVs that are parked or extended out to the edge of the parking area. This forces pedestrians and bicycle riders to be perilously close to PCH traffic. I think everyone agrees that none of this is a safe situation. From an environmental view, we all know the, from the experience at Las Tunas, the gray and black water waste is not being addressed properly by these RVs and the semi RVs. They never move and there's no place for the waste to go but on the ground and the beach. If for no other reason in public health, we need to have these homesteaders move their vehicles, hopefully to an authorized waste disposal site on a regular basis. And as a side note, I want to mention that the Public Safety Commission has regularly, regularly checked with the sheriff to confirm that parking enforcement is taking place in Las Tunas in the middle of the night. As you can imagine, this is a job for very experienced deputies and it's not something that they take lightly. It's not safe to knock on the door of an RV at 2:00 AM in the morning. I want to thank you for your time and I believe both as a public safety commissioner and a private citizen, the residents of Malibu and our visitor population will totally support passage of this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug.
Next is Joel Schulman.
Hi, um, I'd like to reiterate what Jerry Churchill and others have said, that the big victims here are not Malibu people. This is not a NIMBY issue at all. It's a social justice issue. The victims are the people in the valley and Glendale and Culver City. You know, I actually do go to that beach occasionally. And I meet, they're from all over and their, their families from East Los Angeles and they are being deprived. It's not a surfing beach. So, you know, there's not that many Malibu people there. It's, uh, it's rare. So my real question is, why isn't the coastal commission taking the lead in solving this problem and getting, and, and getting rid of these RVs who are far from homeless? Is the city of Malibu working with the coastal commission? Does the coastal commission understand that this is a social justice issue? And completely contrary to everything that they stand for? And shouldn't they be taking the lead or at least be strong allies with the city of Malibu in, in getting rid of the RVs? And this is really a very kind solution to allow them to be, allow the RVs to be on PCH for such a long period of time, even during the day. It's just depriving a lot of people in the city and in the valley and a lot of nice families who really want to come to the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Next is Andy Lyon.
Okay. Yeah, hi. Um, this 12 to 2 is really not gonna, not gonna, you know, do anything to get these guys to leave. I don't see that anybody's gonna, even if they do move, they're, they're gonna just come back and hog the parking up again. We've got to look at a different thing. This is like height restrictions, length restrictions. You know, all the other things. I, I, when you say this, this worked down at Sunset Mesa and Tuna Beach, it only worked there because it just kicked it up the beach. I mean, if you, if you took Sunset Mesa on the land side and you, and you said you could go up to Tuna, well, Tuna's better. And now Tuna, Tuna's not so great compared to Corral. So you're just kicking this plan, you know, further and further up the, up the coast and inviting more and more. I mean, cause Tuna is still, there's a bunch of guys down there today. I was going down in the town today. They're, they're still down at Sunset Mesa. They're, you know, they're, they're creeping in. And the, and the fact that this does have a tie into, and I know that, that there is a tie into a safe parking lot that goes at the end of Zuma Beach. And, and there is a tie into having a homeless shelter at the library, next to the library because of this situation. I mean, this isn't, this doesn't come without a cost to, to everything else to get these signs and to put 12 to 2 up. Everybody knows there's only two sheriffs out here at night. I mean, that's just common knowledge. And, and so, you know, we can't even stop the highway racers on highway. Like we're going to get these guys to move their RVs at 12, you know, 2 o'clock. Okay, they're there. They're ready for the rest, rest of the next day. You gotta go after, after, you know, space size or something, like everybody else is saying, this is such a dangerous situation. Everybody takes their life in their hands when they drive through that, that zone. It's probably the most dangerous stretch of highway now. And somebody said, well, somebody's going to lose their life. There have been people that have been killed on that stretch. I know somebody that, that swerved because a kid ran out and he, he, uh, he swerved and not hit the kid and then crashed his car and his own kid died. So, I mean, stuff like that happens down there all the time. And, you know, you can, you should, I think that we should get the, the lifeguards involved and put that corner pocket up by, by, uh, Malibu Road and put a lifeguard tower in there and take that whole corner where everybody's really taking over and make that a lifeguard. Get, get them in on that. So we take that spot out. But as far as, as, as kicking this problem further and further up into Malibu and bringing them further into Malibu, we will never get this out. We will never get these RVs out of Malibu. Is, you know, it's gotta be at least 12 to 5 and it's gotta be height and length restrictions and maybe even parking meters or something. I don't know. It's not fair to everybody comes out here like everybody says. These guys are hogging parking and it does happen in Malibu too. It does happen in Surf Rider. We get guys doing this where they do the same thing and they don't move and it's unfair to people when they're just living in their cars and they're leaving garbage and they're, and they're, and they're, you know, human waste all over the place and, you know, charge these guys. Do something, but to just say 12 to 2, it's done. It's not, that's not a solution at all. I'm sorry, it's not.
Next we'll hear from Paul Grisanti.
You were unmuted for a second, Paul.
Unmute?
There you go.
I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Now it says all unmute. Am I muted or not?
You are not muted. We can hear you.
Perfect. Uh, I just wanted to say how enthusiastic I am about this ordinance and I think it's really a wonderful thing and you ought to vote for to zip for it. It's wonderful. The next thing we gotta do is raise the fines for all of the crazy parking that's going on around here. And I've been told by a member of the sheriff's department that we have the power to do it. So let's do that next. But this is great. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
That completes public comment.
Okay, we're back at the commission. I'll, I'll let everyone speak here. I just, just a quick word first that, um, this situation's a disaster. It really is. It's a disaster on so many levels. And, uh, we have a lot of work to do and it's really, really tricky. It's not easy and everyone here said is absolutely true. There's no one that's wrong. Um, with that, we're trying to do what we can. And, um, I'll let everyone else take a stab at this first, but, uh, that just came bubbling out. So, uh, once again, I don't know, I seem to have this order tonight. Karen, do you want to go first?
Uh, as far as I'm concerned, this is not a day too soon. I think others would agree. We could have benefited from this a long time ago. For every reason that's been named, public safety, public health, environmental justice. What's been happening and what's been growing week by week or month by month is kind of hard to believe. But here we are. So yeah, I would like to get this done. Sure, we'd love to have more hours. Whether it was 12 to 5 or, or 10:00 PM to, to 6:00 AM or something. Yeah, that'd be even better. But we've been told by the coastal commission that that's not going to happen for us. So if this is the best we can get, I'll take it. We know, uh, the success that it's had at Las Tunas. I might be forgetting something, but I don't think I remember getting a, a single neighbor complaint down at Las Tunas. Since parking's been restricted there and we got a lot of complaints before that and people were outraged. For good reason. Uh, I've got video on my phone of dumping of human waste right onto the beach. We all know that that's happening. As far as encroachment onto the road, not leaving room for pedestrians, bicycles, the whole thing is a disaster. Yeah, if we could, if we could limit it even more, I would love to do that. But, but if this is as much as we can get, I'll take it. So, um, yeah, and if we could do other areas, I would do that too. But for the moment, I'll take it with this. I do want to address a couple of people mentioned, um, questioning or stating that there must be some tie-in to safe parking and a shelter. Those are related issues, but those are not trade-off issues from anything that I know regarding this. And I wouldn't be okay with that. So as far as I'm concerned, this stands on its own. And again, I'll take it. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Karen. Jefferson?
Thank you, Mikey. Just want to remind many of the speakers this evening that, uh, this is somewhat experimental. The coastal commission has made their opinion, uh, in strong favor of, of access to all. Motorhomes have their rights as well as they, as they think they do. I tend to call them motor homeless. But the reason we have to do it 12 to 2 or 2 to 4 is because that's been okayed. It's been proven that the coastal commission will work with it. It's a start. It, uh, will interrupt the, the ease of which these motorhomes are occupying public space. I just wanted to remind people that on a couple of occasions, I've actually pulled up to the motorhome park right across the street. It's an Adamson property. And looked at how many spaces were open in the evenings during the week. One night I visited, there are 14 spaces open. On the weekends, it's a little tighter. In midwinter, when the parking lot on PCH known as Corral Beach was fully packed, as one speaker Jerry mentioned, 30 to 40 motorhomes, I counted 29 that night. There were 26 spaces left open. That means every motorhome could have gone up and parked legally in the motorhome park, but they chose not to. So they're occupying space. It's meant for the general public and the general taxpayer. We have to move on this cautiously. We have to move on it in a manner that shows that we're trying to be fair to all. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Skylar?
Well, I think that, uh, you know, I'm, I have support getting any of these parking restrictions that, and I think it would be, I wish we could do it sort of all at once and sort of eliminate the problem because it just feels like time and time again, it kind of kicks the problem down the road. I mean, the people at Las Tunas are stoked. That's a, you know, there's a victory there, but you know, you can see the same RVs that were down there. They're now at Corral and they're at Zuma. So, you know, I think that we have to get this done and you know, we're gonna have to keep actively, you know, in, improving it. It's, it's very, uh, I think it's frustrated for all of us. It's frustrated when you see, you know, people come and attack the city council on next door or any other, you know, any other social media thing that it's like, you know, we've done this and, you know, we're inviting them to come out here. It's, it's very frustrating. I wish that the coastal, I, I forget which speaker it was that noted that, you know, it should be like the coastal commission should be advocating for the public to be able to access it and have limits on parking so that more, more people can actually access the beach. We've discussed that more than once. So anyways, it's uh, frustrating, but I feel that we need to do to, to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Um, just to say it again, this is, this, this issue is a disaster. And by the way, the people at Las Tunas are not happy. They're overrun during the day. It's, it doesn't end. The overcrowding issues in Malibu from visitors, whether they're parking there overnight or not, are pretty overwhelming right now, I think for all of us. So um, I see Christie there all of a sudden. So uh, just, just joining in to look. Okay. Um, yeah, I think the other uh, counselor said it well. We are doing what we think we can do and um, it's not enough. We're far from being not enough. Oh, and to Bruce, no, this is not tie in. This is not contingent on a safe parking program at Zuma. But we do have bigger issues and I've spoken about that and I know some of you disagree. But we do have really big issues that a lot of cities have. How are we going to deal with this? And we do need to have a real robust community discussion on this because the options are not what maybe some of you hope at this time. So Boise, Martin versus Boise has really thrown a monkey wrench into a lot of things and the Supreme Court has refused to hear it to this point. And it puts everyone in a really difficult position, including our sheriffs and enforcement. We all know that the situation in RVs is not all homeless people at all. That's not reality. It's people using this, gaming the system. And that's difficult and painful and it's unfair. And yes, I'd love it for the coastal commission to team up with us on trying to make this safer, more sanitary and more access for the people that need it. I mean, we are, like I said, overrun by people needing to come to the beach now, especially with the pandemic and levels we've never seen. And you're right, there's absolutely nowhere for them to go. And it's dangerous. What every single speaker said. Two things stand out to me here I want to highlight. Um, one speaker brought up our parking fines. Uh, yes, I think we need to look at that. Absolutely. Great thought. Um, been discussing that for the last few weeks. I'm glad it was mentioned tonight. Yeah, I agree. We need to look at our parking fines. We have people parking illegal now that just are fine with the ticket. And for them, family of four, $58. Yeah, give me a ticket. I'm going to the beach. We're, we're, thank you. Um, so yeah, I think that's an issue. And uh, another speaker mentioned, and, and actually Christie or Riva could help me here. And this is a good point. I want to check back. I know we've talked about it before, but height and length um, issues. I think Andy brought that up. Do we have any additional latitude on the size of vehicles related in particular with, with Martin versus Boise? Is that any sort of, I am fishing here, I'm fishing. Help me out. Um, is there any sort of latitude we have to control parking from vehicles based on their size despite Martin versus Boise?
I'm gonna let Christie handle that one. My answer would be probably not, but um, I think she'll jump in.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that Martin uh, case has anything to do with the size of the vehicle. So I, I don't think that that's necessarily an impediment. And we can look at oversized vehicles, you know, separately. Um, what's before you tonight though, um, deals more comprehensively regardless of the size of the vehicle because it um, deals with the overnight parking. So it may be a better fix than looking just at the size.
Right. I, I'm sorry. I got off topic. Thank you for reeling me back in. I'm a little emotional about this subject. It's, it's really a very difficult subject. Um, I'm, I'm gonna go out of my order here and Jefferson will get right to you. And I'm just gonna make an emotion to approve this and then I'll send it over to Jefferson for your comments.
Okay, we need a second.
I will second.
Quickly, uh, go ahead.
No, oh, Jefferson, go ahead, I think.
Yes, thank you. Uh, it was Martin versus Boise. The part that dealt with uh, um, the complication dealing with personal effects was the Anderson part of the decision. Though the ninth court did make the opinion, you had to furnish public areas equal, equal that kind of thing. But in the Anderson part of the decision, it's important for people to remember that there was restrictions made on personal size and possessions of what they could take with them to the public properties. You could, if you read the whole decision, it's a great piece of uh, or yeah, you gotta read the whole thing. But we'll breach that later. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, the motion on the floor is to approve staff recommendation, which includes introducing on first reading ordinance number four, six, nine, an ordinance of the city of Malibu determining the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and amending section 10.19.020 of chapter 10.19 Overnight Parking of the Malibu Municipal Code to create staggered overnight parking restrictions between 12 AM and 2 AM and between tw- 2 AM and 4 AM daily in the Corral Beach and Zuma Beach areas of Pacific Coast Highway.
That is my motion.
Would you like a roll call?
Oh yeah, I just want to make sure Skylar seconds that.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Yeah, roll call please.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor President Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you to the speakers on that issue as well. Uh, we are on item 4C. amend assessment district 2015 dash one civic center wastewater treatment facility dash phase one. Okay. Oh, there's Rob. Can we have a report, please?
Uh, yes. Um, good evening, council. Tonight we're having a public hearing to modify the assessment district for phase one of the civic center water treatment facility project. Back in uh, 2016, actually uh, January, uh, council established a assessment district for the financing purposes for the design and construction of phase one of the treatment plant. And um, that assessment district included 57 parcels and their assessments were, were based on the individual flows for each, each of the parcels. And so their assessments are, are placed on their tax bill and um, and the property owners pay their taxes and pay this assessment every year. Um, since 2016, we've had a, a few parcels that actually been modified. Um, the first one is the Whole Foods Development Center. Um, there are two parcels over there. And back in 2017, they merged those, those two properties together. And then there's another set of parcels. It's the case development. We've had, uh, there's three parcels there originally. And um, they had a track map that created seven separate parcels. And so that is different than what we originally set the assessments. And so because of those changes, uh, we need to amend the assessment um, district. Or, and just to make sure that those parcels are correctly identified i- in the assessment. Um, also want to note that there's no changes to the wastewater flows. These parcels aren't getting any additional wastewater allocations. Um, the, the, the original assessment report already identified how much flow these, these properties will be uh, contributing to. And um, those allocations will be placed on, on the new parcels. And so um, once again, there's no new um, wastewater. There's, there's nothing being changed. It's just the parcels themselves are being updated and that will assist us when we're um, taking the tax rolls to the county and placing those assessments on there. So um, with, with that, um, staff recommends adopting resolutions number 2043 approving the amendment and I'm available for questions.
Mikey, you're on mute.
Here, I'm mute.
I was lip syncing, sorry. Um, do, um, do we, thank you, Rob, for the report. Do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Okay, then I send this uh, to the council for comments for our motion. Jefferson?
I'd just like to remind council and uh, legal staff that uh, this is phase one and I can vote on it. I am uh, part of phase two with my property in the civic center. Thank you.
Good reminder. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Okay, any more comments? Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor President Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we trudge forward. Is everyone okay? Everyone, no one need a quick break? Are we good? Okay, we're good. So we are now on item 6B, review of fiscal year 2020 and dash 2021 budget. Can we have a report? And I see Lisa has appeared. So I'm assuming that's where the report's coming from.
Yes, it is. Um, it's not quite good evening, maybe good night, uh, mayor and council. Um, the item before you is the review of the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 and proposals for revision to both revenue and expenditures for the year. Next slide, please. When the budget was adopted on June 22nd, the council requested that staff return with a report on the status of the budget in August, based on the continuing economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff has continued to monitor uh, the revisions to the stay at home orders by the state of California and the county of Los Angeles. At the time of budget adoption in June, the county was in stage two of the reopening process and was soon to be in stage three. However, on June 28th, due to a spike in COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations, the state and county amended the previous orders to require that all bars close unless they offered food. Over the next two weeks, further closures were put into place, including indoor dining at restaurants, further closures of fitness centers, hair salons and indoor malls. The closures of these sectors and the additional closures of beaches over the Fourth of July weekend have negatively impacted multiple line items in the city's budget. The fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget relies on the one-time use of Southern California Edison Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds. In the amount of $3.94 million, in anticipation that these funds will not be available in fiscal year 21, 22, council requested that staff identify possible reductions in the city's budget. Staff evaluated options for reducing Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department costs. As public safety remains a high priority for the city, staff does not recommend cutting sheriff services at this time. A request to the sheriff and the county board of supervisors to suspend the half percent increase on the liability trust fund for fiscal year 2021 was approved. This will save the city $40,000 in the current fiscal year. Staff also reached out to the California Highway Patrol to explore the options of hiring CHP deputy to replace some sheriff department services. The costs of CHP personnel were found to be more expensive than the sheriff's department. Staff recommends not adjusting the sheriff's department contract at this time and setting aside some funds to hire CHP deputies on overtime to assist with PSS events or other emergency situations. Per council direction, an inquiry was made to staff to see if anyone was interested in an early retirement program that would, that would give each participant a $2,000 per year of service lump sum cash payment. No one was interested in a retirement incentive program under those terms. Additionally, council directed staff to bring back options to reduce $500,000 in salaries and benefits, options to reduce community services programs and activities, and options to reduce environmental sustainability programs. I will discuss those programs in a moment. Next slide, please. Staff has revised the proposed revenue assumptions in the budget based on the latest data available. Local businesses are anecdotally reporting a drop in revenue of 75% during what is typically the city's busiest season. Reports from the city's sales tax consultant, HDL, project that sales tax revenue will be impacted for at least the next two years. Staff has decreased the fiscal year 2021 sales tax revenue by $200,000. Local hotels are estimating that reservations are down by approximately 30 to 50%. Staff estimates a further reduction of $100,000 from transient occupancy taxes for hotels and motels. Additional reductions have been made to revenue from fees and permits based on a decrease in applications for projects submitted to the city over the past two months and what we project going forward for the rest of the fiscal year. These decreases total $677,800. Since the adoption of the budget in June, the city has received information from the Los Angeles County Assessor's Office, which indicates a $350,000 increase in property taxes for the fiscal year. Staff also anticipates an increase of $121,500 in settlements from a longstanding code enforcement case and a class action lawsuit. The total increases of $471,500 partially offset the reductions. The total decrease in revenue is projected to be $206,300 for the fiscal year. Next slide, please. The general fund revenue budget for fiscal year 2021 is three, is three, $30.2 million. Based on the preceding reductions of almost 200, over $200,000, the proposed general fund budget is just under $30 million. Staff has developed a plan that reduces expenditures by the $500,000 as directed by council and the additional net decline of revenues of $200,000 for a total of $700,000. Next slide. Staff is proposing a number of amendments in general fund expenditures to achieve just over $700,000 in reductions. Since there was no interest from staff in the retirement incentive program, the elimination of 3.75 positions has been recommended to achieve a savings of $330,000 in fiscal year 2021. These savings will continue in future budget years. Staff also recommends suspension of the city's deferred compensation matching program for the fiscal, for this fiscal year and the next. It will reduce expenditures by $62,000 in the current fiscal year and $85,000 next fiscal year. The city contributes additional funds to CalPERS every year to minimize the unfunded liability of retiree costs, including pensions and health benefits. During the development of the fiscal year 2021 budget, staff used the actuarial analysis prepared in July of 2018 by Bartell and Associates for the city's estimated contribution to other post-employment benefits or OPEB for retiree health. These actuarial valuations are prepared every two years for reporting to CalPERS. The city just received its new valuation in July, which shows that aggressive funding in prior years has eliminated the city's unfunded liability for these retiree health benefits. Based on the new valuation, the city can reduce its annual contribution by $244,000 in fiscal year 2021 and still remain fully funded. Council also directed staff to reduce community service programs and activities. The community services department evaluated programming considering the latest COVID-19 guidelines. Staff recommends reductions to special events, cultural arts, community classes and senior programs that achieve a hun- a $127,000 decrease. Many programs will be offered virtually during this fiscal year to make up for the fact that people can't really congregate in person. These reductions will be partially offset. These reductions will be partially offset by a $55,000 increase to the skate park program to cover the cost of staff time and a security guard necessary to reopen the facility. The council also directed staff to reduce environmental sustainability programs. Unlike community services, these programs do not use outside contractors or part-time staff. Reductions to these programs are reflected in the loss of one full-time position in that department. To meet the council goals of public safety, staff proposes adding $100,000 to fund CHP services for PSPS and emergency situations. Additionally, staff is recommending adding a new associate civil engineer position to the building safety department to assist with permit review. The cost of this position would be offset by savings in professional services. As proposed, these expenditure changes yield a reduction of just over $700,000. Next slide, please. The adopted general fund expenditure budget was $30.6 million. With a proposed $700,000 in decreases, the general fund expenditure budget will be $29.5 million. This maintains a balanced budget for the fiscal year and provides for $500,000 to be set aside for increased debt service expenditures that will be due in fiscal year 21, 22. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the council adopt the two resolutions attached to the staff report. Resolution 20-46 amends the annual budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and resolution 20-47 amends the authorized positions and salary ranges for the fiscal year. This concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and I'm sure that our department heads are here as well in case you have specific questions for them.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate your report. Do we have public speakers on this item?
We have one public speaker, Andy Lyon.
Okay, great. Andy, you're up.
I don't think he's in the meeting anymore.
I don't see either at the moment. Okay, so that's it. No more public speakers?
Correct.
Okay, then we're back to the council. Skylar?
I was just gonna offer that we, you know, Rick and I, obviously Rick's not here this evening, but we discussed some of the stuff related to this at our A and F meeting, and I just, you know, kind of concur with where staff is at on this. And I, we pretty much both did in that meeting, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
First, I just want to thank the staff. I know the budget's a lot of work, and then going back like this was, was just a lot of work on your part, and I appreciate that. I just want to say, I think it's obvious, this is part of the difficulty in dealing with financial downturn. And fortunately, we're not suffering the effects nearly as much as a lot of other cities that I and others on the council are in communication with. But we're in an unprecedented time. We know that. We've got this ongoing global pandemic. I'm happy to see this conservative approach and you know, I think I've used this term every time. We're in an austerity mode. So I'm sorry to see some of the community programs being given a haircut, but that's the prudent thing to do. And one of my biggest concerns, I assume it's everyone's, but I'll say mine, is just avoiding the financial cliff next year that we could be facing if we don't do this. So you know, and next year, we also go into beginning to pay the debt service for the, the properties that the city acquired in 2018. So I just want to thank the staff and I'm, I'm definitely on board with this.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Jefferson?
No comment, Mikey. Thank you.
I'd like to know comment, but I don't know how.
Mayor, can I just jump in one second? I did just notice in the PowerPoint presentation, we had a typo on one of the numbers of the starting general fund balance, a general fund budget, what was adopted. On, it says it's 30 million 551. It actually is 251. The information in the written staff report is correct, but I did want to just point that out that there was an error in that. So I apologize for that. We've been a lot of different moving parts there. So thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. And for myself, I went through it with a fine-tooth comb and pestered Riva for quite some time to discuss it. This is hard times. It's really difficult to be in this phase, but I agree with the conservative approach. Some of this is just, it's, it's difficult for me, anything to do with less resources on our environmental programs is very hard for me, but, but you know what? We got to be healthy and we have a responsibility to the city and we have to take a conservative approach right now, and I totally agree with it. Any other comments or emotion here?
I did want to just point out, Lisa glossed over it fairly quickly, but the significance of that reduction of $240,000 in our post-employment benefits is really a significant thing. Most cities really have struggled with that liability. And about 10 years ago, we really took a very aggressive approach to try and fund that and took advice from different actuaries who, who provided us with input. And it has paid off, and it's paid off for us at this really critical time. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of what a good position that puts us in, in terms of that liability.
It does, and we discussed that, I believe it was today, when I asked you, is there any other city in America is in that position? Because it's really quite remarkable from what I see in cities across the country. And, and you know what? It puts us in a better position to bounce back as we get there. So I think that it is, it is substantial, and it shows to the financial health of the city and that we're guarding it so carefully, and I agree with it. Well done. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Riva. And thank you, staff, that helped on that. A motion, anybody?
Sure.
You want to go ahead, Jefferson?
I think Jefferson was like first, so I'll take the motion from Jefferson. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, and the motion is to approve the staff report or the fiscal review?
This is for staff recommendation, correct?
Yes, staff recommendation. Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yep. Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Potempeek?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. We are on item seven A, funding for property acquisition in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. This is brought forward by Councilmember Fair, so I will have her take over.
Thank you, Mikey. Yeah, I, first of all, I want to acknowledge and thank Pat Healy for her longstanding environmental work, but also for making sure that we were aware of this. Yeah, I would just like to ask for authorization for the mayor to send a letter requesting that the funds for the National Parks and Public Land Legacy Restoration Fund established by the Great American Outdoors Act be allocated for acquisition of high priority properties in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. This is our backyard, and this is our, this is our land to, to cherish and, and ask for additional funding to preserve. And if there is funding to be had from the federal government, I think we need to do everything we can to try to claim some of it.
Great. Thank you. Do we have speakers on this item?
One speaker, Bruce Silverstein.
Okay, great. Bruce, you're up.
Okay. Good evening again. So I, first of all, I want to echo the, the, thanks for Pat Healy. She does an amazing job. I support the proposal for city council to authorize the mayor to send a letter to local elected federal officials in support of funding the acquisition of land in the Santa Monica Mountains to be preserved as a public trust. I think that's great. Because of the divisive partisan politics that are rampant in this country, however, and bearing in mind the Senate Majority Leader's recent mocking of the mayor's request for pandemic relief funding, I want to encourage the city council to, to pursue caution in the letters dispatched and make sure that it's subject to prior review and comment by all members of council in order to have minimized the potential for further disparagement of Malibu. More eyes are better than one. Also, I just wanted to comment with respect to the 5G issue that was the subject of substantial comment earlier tonight. I urge the city council to exercise similar extreme caution before jumping into the breach of lobbying, amicus briefing, or other action that involves payment of lobbyists, lawyers, or other professionals. The 5G issue affects everyone in the country. If Malibu is going to serve as a public face for opposition, other governments and other constituencies should share in Malibu's cost and expense of doing so. Also, be aware that lawyers who recommended getting involved in various ways are, stand to benefit financially from the effort and are therefore far from disinterested in the advice that they put forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. And there's no more public speakers?
That's correct.
Okay, we're back here. Do we have a motion?
I move to request the mayor to send a letter for the above stated action.
Okay, and I think I saw a second from Jefferson?
Yes, Mikey, just one comment quickly and briefly to the speaker's mention of cautious approach. We sent a similar letter just a couple of months ago to the state requiring, requesting additional funds to buy the corridor at Canaan coming into Malibu. And the full 5-0 council agreed with that letter and went forward. So it's not like we're stepping out of bounds here. Just want to remind everybody that whenever these decent proposals come up, that whether it's state or federal, we should at least apply, and thank you for Karen, thank you Karen for finding this one. The last one went through and high honors and high fives. Hopefully we get all this funding. Thank you.
Okay, great. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Potempeek?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. We're at item seven B, and these are state housing bills that we've been following. Actually, the list is much bigger than what I want to bring forward here. These bills mostly upset local jurisdiction, and that makes them obviously very difficult for a city like ours as we, as we went over with 5G tonight. It's hard having a lack of local control. The bills that still matter here, hang on, I got my list, because some of these bills have not gone forward, so we don't need to write a letter, would be AB 725, which is Wick's bill. And there's much more details here in the staff report, but AB 2345 from Gonzalez, SB 995 from Atkins, SB 1085 from Skinner, and SB 1120 from Atkins also. Some of these bills would have, and if we want, we can spend the time to go through them, a really potentially significant impact on, on Malibu, such as liking, allowing subdividing lots into four different lots and allowing a lot more density than we ever had planned or we want to allow. So I'm assuming people have read it, but we can go through it in more detail, but those are the bills that we've been following that are recommended that we that we oppose and send letters.
Mayor, if I might jump in, I did also want to add in that the COG did discuss all of the bills that were listed in the staff report. And the COG decided to let individual cities take a position before the COG took a position, and that the COGS' hope was that they would have a unanimous vote if it came back before the COG, as opposed to splitting it, because obviously some of the issues impact different cities differently. So I did want to add that that was kind of the impetus of where these bills came from, and you were correct in the ones that you listed. So when we get to the point of a recommended action, just to make sure that the motion, it shows that we're only supporting those bills that are still active on the floor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that qualifier. I appreciate it at this late hour, and I mean, of course, to Bruce's comment, there's always risk of opposing. We try and be very judicious, such as the letter he keeps mentioning, which over 230 California cities, by the way, sent in. That's just California, just a little FYI. So back to this. Comments or emotion or I'll make a motion to approve, but comments, please?
Do you have one public speaker?
I apologize. I thought we'd gotten there. I think I'm getting a little tired, to be honest, but let's have our public speaker, please.
It's Bruce Silverstein.
Hey, great. Hey, Bruce, you're up.
Hey, you know what? In deference to the time and all the work you all are doing, I'll, I'll pass. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Bruce. Thanks for your comments tonight. We're back here. I'll, I'll make a motion and entertain conversation on it, discussion or a second?
Or Jefferson, either. It doesn't matter to me.
I did the last one, so you get this one, Karen.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment and remind people that 902, you're a part of this, which would affect us most deeply because it impacts the use of properties, and we have septic systems here. There's no way this could be carried into the city of Malibu. Our COG neighbors have a deeper systems than we do here, and we've really got to watch these things, and I'm glad you guys picked up on this. It would be devastating. It would have created real turmoil here for all of us and including the visitors to Malibu. Thank you, Mikey.
That's a great comment. Luckily, 902 has been held in committee. But there are some just potentially devastating bills here that, you know, the League of Cities has been warning us about, our, our lobbyists have been worrying us warning us about. So, but thank you for comments. Can we have a roll call on this, please?
Um, do you mind reading off the bills that we're actually sending letters for?
Yes, okay, we're sending letters on AB 725, which is Wick's bill. Christie has appeared. Do you want to add something? Okay, just checking. AB 2345 from Gonzalez, SB 995 from Atkins, SB 1085 from Skinner, and SB 1120 from Atkins.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Potempeek?
Yes.
Martha and Carrie.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you, everyone, for your really hard work tonight. This is another in a series of long meetings. I appreciate that everyone is so prepared and make a motion here to close tonight at 11:39 PM.